Thank you very much. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the regular committee of the whole meeting for May 30th to order. I'd like to first also state that we are on the traditional territories of the Tsunamoo First Nations. Can we have an introduction of late items, please, Ms. Curry?
Thank you, your worship. Am I on? Yeah. For the addenda, we did have two additional items, but both now have been withdrawn. The motion from your worship to bring back for reconsideration DP 989 at 3795 Glen Oaks Drive, it cannot be done at a committee of a whole meeting, and that's in accordance with Section 154 of the community charter. So therefore, it'll be reconsidered at the next regularly scheduled meeting of council, June 13th, 2016. And we had an addition of a delegation request, Mr. Terry Wagler, but he has withdrawn his request to be a delegation, as well as 12D, Mr. Robert Fuller, he's withdrawn his request to be a delegation.
12D, thank you. Any other late items, council? Seeing none, can I have a motion?
Actually, I pushed a little pushy thing.
Officer Fuller?
Yeah, Kevin Story wanted to speak as a delegation, but I'm not sure if he still does now that that item's been pulled off the agenda.
If I am, they should still talk to their vice-councils.
He wants...
Okay. So can he be added to the agenda as a delegation at the end with the rest of them?
So you wish to add Mr. Kevin Story?
Yep.
I'm calling that 12H. In fact, is everything moving up then?
I think it might be 12G.
It will now become 12G. Thank you. Any other items, council? Seeing none, can I have a motion for the adoption of the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Councilor Hong, seconded by Councilor Beswick, thank you. Discussion, seeing none, call the question. All who's in favor, opposed, motion carries. Can we have a motion for the adoption of the minutes, please, of the...
So moved.
Thank you.
There are no minutes.
There are no minutes. We're mistaking that with the other ones. Thank you. Those that could be coming up shortly. Okay, the first item then is item 5A, is presentation from Dr. Paul Hasselback, island health regarding local health.
To worship members of council, it's always nice to be able to come back and join you, and I'm glad several of you are celebrating Bike to Work Week. I got a note from your transportation planner asking me to remind you, so it looks like you certainly don't need that, but that's not why I'm here. I did have the pleasure of coming to council several months ago to talk to you about our overdose situation. I can provide an update if you have questions afterwards, but the focus of what I really like to speak to you today is of the other substances used and misuse. It was prompted by a report by the Centre for Addiction Research at the University of Victoria that identified the last couple of years, while most alcohol consumption across Canada has been decreasing, in B.C. it took a surge upwards, and we'll focus in on that in just a moment. The other important component of that report was if you look at the number of hospitalizations, what you see is the relative importance between tobacco, when we're talking mortality, and hospitalization to alcohol, which is intermediate here, but relatively speaking, illicit drugs actually are a small component, given the amount of publicity that they've received over the last period of time. This picture is changing with regards to alcohol and tobacco and the focus of what prompted me coming forward here. The other good news stories might be that, for the most part, we're seeing reductions in substances like tobacco. We think we're seeing a reduction in illicit substances, but it's actually not a really good, well-measured component. We've seen a definite increase in overdoses related to the types of substances. We've seen some reductions in other areas, and we've definitely seen increases in cannabis, so I'll be talking a little bit about cannabis as well. If we look at mortality, what you see on these two general trends, whether you're looking at our local area in Nanaimo in red, the island in green, or B.C. in blue, generally speaking, we're starting to see increases in alcohol and poor outcomes from alcohol and continued decreases in tobacco. This is mortality. When we bring that to hospitalization, we've actually had a reversal so that alcohol-related hospitalization has become more common on both the island and here in Nanaimo over tobacco. That picture will continue to change as a result of decreasing tobacco use and increasing alcohol use. And one of the gain, one of the reasons why it's prompted to bring me here to give you an update in terms of these substances specifically. If we look across the island at alcohol-related mortality, so this is a standard calculation that's undertaken, we can do so by geographic area, and I draw your attention to Nanaimo perhaps being a little bit higher than it should be, and a reason why we might want to have those discussions about what does alcohol policy look like and what can we do to reduce those rates here in Nanaimo specifically. If we look at alcohol consumption compared to the island as a whole, we see a common pattern both here in Nanaimo and across the island. In about 2008, 2009, with the introduction of the drinking and driving laws and regulations in the province of B.C., we saw a significant drop-off through to about 2011, '12 relative to alcohol consumption. Now here, we're talking about liters of absolute alcohol per adult, and there are 58 glasses of wine or beers in a absolute liter of alcohol. This converts to an average of about two drinks per adult, per person, per adult, per day, every day of the year. So you can put your own consumption in that context, but that brings us about where our levels are for Canadian recommendations on risk consumption of alcohol. Our average levels for women are two per day, for men are three per day. We're at least in that context now in terms of what we as a general population are averaging is close to high-risk consumption. If we look at consumption by, sorry, if we look at purchase in liters, Nanaimo's towards the center here, but there's a problem in terms of these stats, and they're often utilized relative to conveying how much alcohol is being consumed. The better number to look at is the alcohol-related mortality. I do share these because alcohol purchasing is by location. It's not always purchased here. We have other people that come in and purchase in Nanaimo as well, center of the pack, but it's not the same as our alcohol-related mortality. Just shifting gears for a little bit, if we're actually talking what's required, and this is whether we're talking about opiate issues or overdoses, is a broad range of policy shifts and approaches, and that ranges from earlier intervention on drug use and addiction, the effective prevention activities, and understand the police department's now going into high schools and talking about our overdose situation, some major policy shifts, safer consumption sites. We've talked about naloxone here, actually happy to report because I know Chief Ferguson is here, the fire department had their first reversal of an overdose on the weekend from the fact that they're now carrying naloxone as well. All this is really good, but there's still lots more that needs to be undertaken, including changes in the access to opiate substitution or methadone, which has become extremely difficult to undertake in Central Island. And we can talk about housing solutions where council's actually been fairly proactive. I also wanted to touch on marijuana. I know council is looking at policy options for marijuana and cannabis as we go forward here. It's this changing regulatory environment which prompts the need to be proactive rather than reactive. I think that there are a variety of different options about how we address this, but while cannabis currently is used for sporadic purposes, any deregulation or decriminalization that makes it more normal will start bringing cannabis into the same context as alcohol. And if you had to compare the two, I'm not going to stand up here and tell you one is better than the other. Both have recreational value, both have downsides as well. It's not that one is significantly better. As I mentioned, there are a few proven benefits for either alcohol or cannabis, and we're into the issue of how are we going to regulate the dispensaries, and I know council's already been discussing that. We also have a developing issue in terms of prescription drug overdoses, and certainly I've been working with the medical community, as has others, in terms of ensuring that their narcotic prescribing is the best possible. When we're looking at our opiate problem, and it tends not to be the diversion of medical prescribing into the illicit drug economy, however, we still have a problem for those that have chronic pain where we're not necessarily addressing the actual prescribing, and we need to be doing that. So what, just in closing here, there are some things that councils can be undertaking, both in terms of the things that you can do that will make the situation worse, including availability, accessibility, whether we're talking cannabis or alcohol or other substances, and there are some things that you can do to alleviate or make that a little bit easier. And it's not to suggest that we're not seeing changes in the economies out there, and we're not seeing changes in terms of the accessibility, but councils can be proactive in trying to stem what could be otherwise the negative consequences. I'm going to flag that since we're talking substances, Nanaimo's Clean Air Bylaw, which five years ago was the best on the island, probably needs a little bit of tweaking relative to inclusion of all smoke products. At the moment, it's specific just to tobacco, and excludes the issue of vaping, which will be addressed in part by provincial regulation, but those regulations aren't in place yet. We know the value of housing, and I will say that the regional district in conjunction with the city have actually been very proactive. It's not time to let down the guard if we take a look to our colleagues to the south here in terms of the challenges when you don't have enough housing options available, and those have to be the diversity of options from detox right through to collective-supported environments. And the challenges associated with zoning and community acceptance are things that councils can be really proactive in. You are good advocates, you have been good advocates. I encourage you to continue to advocate even to the organization I work for. You can certainly build hope where we're talking about treatment detox options. So brewing centers is something you're going to hear more about, and you should be looking at municipal alcohol policies, and I don't believe that that's something formally council has looked at, though I know you are looking at some of your alcohol zoning issues. And with that, your worship, members of council, that's exactly nine minutes and 57 seconds. Thank you very much. I'm happy to take your questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the delegation? I see them. Thank you very much.
Wait a second.
Counselor Kip.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you very much for your presentation. On the vapor thing, when are they going to have statistical information on what that does compared to, you know, the smoking? We have a lot of statistical information on the inhalation of hydrocarbons through combustion. This is different. How long is it going to take?
So on the vaping issue, through your worship, I think at this point in time, there's no suggestion that vaping is worse than tobacco. Matter of fact, it's significantly better than tobacco. It is a harm reduction activity for those people who are currently using tobacco, but has become a problem as an entry for youth and others that have access, and currently we don't have the restrictions in place. We also strongly recommend that where there are restrictions on tobacco, those same restrictions people in place on vaping, it's worked reasonably well for tobacco. Most people who are smokers are able to manage those restrictions, let vaping only be restricted to the same locations and areas where tobacco is used.
Thank you very much. And a follow-up, do you know of any current policies from any councils on the island or in the health region that have those type of policies built in now? If you could think of something, send it forward, please.
Okay. Thank you, your worship. And as I say, the province has actually taken a leadership role here with new regulations. It is under the Tobacco Control Amendment Act. They just haven't promulgated those final regulations. That would be the first place to look.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Counselor Fuller?
Thanks for the presentation, Paul. Excellent information. I noticed in the one, geez, my brain just isn't working, the one thing where Lake Cowichin seemed to have the highest alcohol consumption, is that impacted by tourism?
Thank you, through your worship. I've had lots of discussion over the years with Lake Cowichin in terms of consumption up there. It also has a very high alcohol-related mortality. Alcohol-related mortality is based upon the residence of an individual, not where the event occurred, and that's why I flagged for Nanaimo alcohol-related mortality is high as well. In terms of the actual leaders that are being purchased, we've looked both for the west coast as well as Lake Cowichin. Yes, there's a tourism impact. It is not what's driving the major component of their alcohol purchases.
Thanks. Counselor Brennan?
Thank you, your worship. Dr. Hasselback, when you were mentioning that accessibility of alcohol tends to impact the amount of consumption, can you talk a little bit about what you include when you talk about accessibility? Do you mean alcohol in the home, or do you mean proliferation of alcohol outlets in the city or age-related?
Thank you, Councilman Brennan, and through your worship. There's a rich history of decades of work in terms of accessibility or access to alcohol for purchase, whether we're talking onsite consumption or whether we're talking off-site consumption, whether it's retail outlets, in terms of what the density is, what the distance is, what other social locations or institutions like schools are located in proximity to that. That density, the distribution, the availability, hours of day, all continue to contribute to increases or decreases in access, and where we can measure that accessibility, we tend to find a very strong correlation with the negative consequences and the overall amount of alcohol that is consumed. So restricting access or limiting access may be one of the ways to keep consumption at a level that has the least amount of negative consequence.
So do you have an opinion about alcohol sales in grocery stores or corner stores?
Yes. Sorry, your worship, talk about a landmine. Actually, the Health Officers' Council, which is my peers, have a paper that was submitted to MLA Yap at the time of the original documentation, which opposes that overall intent of increasing accessibility. Whether you talk about the sale inside the grocery store, whether it is a component, whether it is by the same unit, and you've actually just moved around licenses, I think that there are subtle discolorations of what that looks like, but overall, when we talk about accessibility and ease of access of alcohol, that is a problem.
So one more question, if I may. We often hear about Europe and European alcohol sales and the availability of Europe to their population, and there is a sense that where, for instance, in Europe, where alcohol is more readily available, that the problems with alcohol consumption in the population are less. Is that, does the science bear that out?
Thank you. That's a really, really great and important question in terms of what do we understand about the culture of consumption in the Canadian context, even if we're comparing that culture of consumption to our friends to the south of the border where accessibility might be greater, let alone to Europe, and that there is a very distinct culture of consumption in Canada, shared by a couple of other countries as well, Australia being an example, where they've actually addressed some of this in trying to reverse their trends. But that that culture of consumption in Canada tends not to be one that allows for free access of alcohol and getting reductions or sustained limitation in alcohol consumption. Now, having said that, I will also qualify that Europe does have a significant problem with alcohol-related mortality and morbidity, and while we often look at and think that that is a safe environment, we can look to certain countries where alcohol-related mortality is extremely high because of the ease of access.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see no further questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, your worship, members of council. Have a great day.
Motion to receive the delegation.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Beswick, seconded by Counselor Thorpe. Thank you. Discussion, seeing none, call the question. All who's in favor, opposed, motion carries. Now, the next item up is administration, and that is under the Core Services Review Final Report. And we have on the line, we have on the line our chief administrative officer, Ms. Samra.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you, council. I just wanted to present the report to you and say some words. Today marks the end of the first phase of council review of the city's core services. On May 27, the Core Services Review Steering Committee voted to receive the final report from Western Management Consultants and recommend receipt of the report by council. And today, I wanted to acknowledge the leadership and support of the senior management team over the last five months. There's been a lot of work behind the scenes to support the Core Services Review. I also want to thank staff for participating in one-on-one meetings and group meetings and completing surveys. They provided their opinions and ideas to the consultants, and I think when you read through the 250-plus pages, you will find staff input throughout it. I also want to thank our external agencies for fully engaging in this exercise. They participated quite at quite a high level. I would like to also make a couple comments about the report. It's broken into 11 areas containing recommendations supporting strategic planning, policy development, staff capacity, finance policy, IT infrastructure, integrated maintenance and purchasing, performance measures, community partnerships, grants, and efficiencies and streamlining. The report identifies a variety of savings and efficiencies which are likely to be achieved through revised business processes and new policies that promote centralization, standardization, and automation. Opportunities exist for the city to better align its activities around a clear vision and strategic plan while also improving its corporate structure, control policies, external relationships, and its ability to raise revenues and save costs. The final report contains a wide range of recommendations, over 100, which council will now reflect on. The recommendations are divided into council actions and administrative actions. In the coming weeks, if council directs, senior staff will put together an action implementation strategy to carry out council's wishes. The strategy will include participation of a variety of stakeholders, including the union. Council was provided a copy of the Core Services Review for the first time on Friday, May 27. However, throughout the review, our consultants have been providing council, staff, and the public regular updates. Overall, staff are pleased with the information contained in the Core Services Review report to the extent that senior management has been able to review it and provide feedback. The report's author, Western Management Consultant, has provided a great deal of information that is current and speaks to a variety of areas where the city can improve services, save money, and introduce new best practices. The report noted that operationally, Nanaimo is well-positioned, with municipal services being largely of high quality and addressing community needs. As well, Nanaimo was shown as comparing favorably with light communities in terms of expenditure, depth, urban sprawl, and readiness for improvement. I would like to thank everybody who played a role in getting us to this point. The steps that we take next will determine which exact recommendations ought to be followed, through on, and when and what we can do in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, are there any other, were you intending to do any sort of presentation, Mr. Memma?
Um, depend on what you do in terms of item 7A, we'll be looking for direction from you, as the CIO alluded to, as to what you would like us to do. We can provide you with a sample motion if you'd like.
Thank you. So, motion to receive the report.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Beswick, seconded by Counselor Hong. Discussion, seeing none, call the question. All who's in favor, opposed, motion carries. Next item.
One of the recommendations from staff was for council to receive the report and ask staff to go back and start working on some implementation strategies for council consideration.
If someone...
Go ahead.
Someone would like to move that council direct staff to come back to council in 30 days with an implementation strategy and recommendations for an implementation strategy?
So moved.
Seconded. Moved by Counselor Kip and seconded by Counselor Fuller. Discussion. Counselor Beswick?
Thank you. I would just first like to comment, if I may, that the Core Services Review, in my mind, is an exceptionally well-prepared document that is both academic and operational as it relates to its substantive analysis and data that's been provided, and I just wish to compliment WMC and all participants, as our city manager. With respect to the motion that is on the floor, did it say within a month, or did it say 30 days? I just wish to ensure that it's enough time for staff to bring back the recommendations in the categories or the two columns, if you will, that has been mentioned, and that there is an surety that they will also be prioritized in an order. There's over 100 recommendations, and so I would just like to make sure that not only does staff return to council with recommendations for implementation, but they return with them prioritized. And there's also, that's all. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Samra, did you wish to respond to that?
Yes. The timeframe is probably, I think that in 30 days, staff can come back and provide some preliminary findings and a preliminary approach and strategy to implementation. We will need council direction on engagement with the community, engagement with stakeholders. So I'd like to be able to come back and seek guidance from council on how we consider and develop an implementation strategy. I don't want to go away for 60 days or 90 days and not come back with the right approach. I think we're best served by council providing leadership and oversight to this next phase.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Brennan?
Where will it be, when will council have an opportunity to decide which recommendations they... they want to proceed with, which ones they don't want to proceed with? Can you give us some sort of idea about when and how the community will be consulted? I'm expecting after this period of time that there is some ideas on how that will happen.
So, council can decide which recommendations it wants to go with or not at any point in time. That's up to council, to put it on an agenda, for council to decide how it wants to do the implementation. So certainly, that's absolutely within the purview of council to make those types of decisions. Staff is not going to get in the way of that. And I think right now it's a bit premature to talk about what the implementation strategy and engagement process will be with over 100 recommendations and 252 pages. I didn't continue reading it over the weekend. We definitely need time to absorb that and come back to council and go, okay, here's some ideas on short, medium, and long-term implementation strategies and different types of issues that you may want to seek public engagement on. Please let us know.
So, I'm having, I mean, I get that we will get a report back from staff with suggestions, but I'm wondering, like, is it expected that the full report, all the recommendations will be included in an implementation plan, and then it'll be up to council to look at that implementation plan and say, okay, this piece, I think is great, we need to implement this. This one, I don't think so, I absolutely know it shouldn't, and this piece, I think we should take to the community and get some of their recommendations. So when we say that staff will be coming back in 30 days with an implementation plan, I would like to know how you see that implementation plan being rolled out to council for council's consideration?
Well, we're not going to come back with a full, comprehensive implementation plan. The motion is to come back with some advice to council on an implementation strategy.
Okay.
I have to stress over and over, it's council that's going to be making these decisions and council's vision and council's direction, and staff will be waiting for that. The whole point of us going away is to take a look at the report and take a look at it in terms of operations, because a lot of the recommendations are for administration. We take a look at it, I get the full input from senior management, from our stakeholders, from staff, whoever we need to consult. We come back and go, these are our preliminary findings for the short, medium, and long term. Here are some ways council can engage with the public. So to be very clear, council will be making the decisions, and council will be providing staff direction on how it wants to engage with the public. It's very much a council decision.
Thank you. That clarifies that for me. I mean, I do recognize that ultimately it is council's decision. I am not confused by that. I was just wondering what the rollout would look like, and it sounds like this is an emphasis on the strategy for us to look at and review. So thank you. Thank you very much for that.
Councillor Fuller.
I'd like to thank WMC's staff and everybody that's been involved in this, including the groups in the community that have taken part. I've talked to a few people who know far more about core reviews than myself, and whereas Pentictin used to be the one everybody talked about, I've heard that this one is far better. So I'm really looking forward to us moving forward. And not being an expert myself, I tend to use a lot of common sense in decisions I make and research, but not being an expert myself, I'm really looking forward to what staff is going to bring back initially. And as councillor Brennan said, ultimately, and Ms. Samra, ultimately, we will approve what moves forward and what doesn't, and what moves forward when and what doesn't. So really looking forward to this, looking forward to the community getting more involved, how that will take place. A lot of it will come as we go, but the thing is, we cannot allow it to stagnate. So we need to keep moving, and we need to ensure that it keeps moving. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Yocum.
Thank you. I'd like to also, well, thank you, Tracy, to you and your staff, to get this rolling in five quick months. When we first started, many of us here actually campaigned, said we want to get a core review done, so I'm pleased we got it done over a year. There's a lot of fear mongering about the core review, it never happened, et cetera, when I started, and then here we are. So that was the hard part, though, which I know you guys do a great job, and in 30 days come forward with your guys' suggestions, and then it gives us 30 days to read. And at the end of the day, this, the implementation plan is, it's the hardest, in my view, not minimizing the hard work, but it's probably the hardest work to come yet, because I've been involved in many strap plans and wonderful stuff, MCFD and whatever we're going to do in my day job, and they sit on a shelf with no implementation plan. So nevertheless, I don't want to be a part of that course of action. So I look forward to our combined implementation plan. And at the end of the day, everyone on this table here, won't we pop there with some group? Because we're going to have to make real decisions, and that's part of what the people expected in the city, and we've got to make sure the dollars have been best used as we go forward to this. So I look forward to that. It's going to be hard choices, but that's why we're here. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Kip.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to commend staff for, during the process, seeing a few things that they could clean up and immediately working on those. I think this is one of the first this city has ever done as a core service review. We've done small portions of it, and this, I want to remind you, was only a portion of the city and will help us improve. So, yeah, we'll make some unpopular decisions with some people. It won't affect me that much, I'm not that popular. But I'd like to appreciate, I'd like to appreciate all of the council's input and the time. At one point, I had to leave a meeting, but they facilitated us with other meetings and really did, and from what I know of it, I think they've done a good job and will help move the city into a more efficient position. We're not losing people and doing anything like that. It's not a slash and burn like the fear tactics that were out there. This is an honest look at what we've been doing. There's some good things in it, there's some other things in it, but all in all, I think it's a really good core service review. Thank you.
Thank you. So there's a motion on the floor. Call the question. All's in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item, Advisory Committee Commission Minutes to receive the, approve the special Open Core Services Review Steering Committee Minutes of March 7. Moved by councillor Beswick, seconded by councillor Kip. Discussion, seeing none, call the question. All's in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. On a housekeeping issue, Ms. Curry, can you please refresh my memory as to when we intend to receive and adopt the minutes of the March, of the May 27 meeting?
That'll be at the next council meeting, your worship.
Thank you very much. Next item, Garner, Crescent, and Emery Way Utility Upgrades Tender and Purposes to Advise Council of Public Tender Call of $250,000 and Above in accordance with the city's Purchasing Biolot number 7175. And there's a motion on page seven, that council direct staff to issue a call for tender for the Garner, Crescent, and Emery Way utility upgrade.
I would so move. Second.
Moved by councillor Thorpe, seconded by councillor Beswick. Thank you. Discussion. Councillor Beswick, do you wish to speak to it? Thank you. Seeing none, call the question. All's in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
Just a question, I know I'm on the phone, so I can't see, but did you call a vote on 7A?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Sorry. Thank you.
Next item is 9A. Press release dated May 12, 2016, from the Vancouver Island Regional Library announcing two local recipients of the 2016 American Library Association Presidential Citation for Innovative International Library Projects. Move for receipt. Councillor Brennan. Seconded by councillor Fuller. Do you wish to speak to it?
I do. I am the trustee on the Vancouver Island Regional Library, representing Nanaimo, and I am really happy to congratulate the two librarians from Nanaimo who received this citation from the American Library Association. It's a presidential citation for innovative international library projects, and there were five awards given, and Nanaimo garnered two of those five awards for this largest library association in North America. So we are really fortunate to have the library staff that we do have. It was for two programs. One of them is called the Vancouver Island Regional Library Correctional Center Program. And one of our librarians began with just a simple plan to improve the existing library at the correctional center here in Nanaimo. But that grew into a book club and a pending agreement that will allow inmates to request specific materials directly from the library. And Jennifer Sepper, the librarian who started this program, recognized the link between increased literacy and a decrease in the resituation rate for people returning to correctional facilities. And so that's one reason why this is a very significant program and was recognized across North America. The other program that was recognized was, I want to also add that she started a book club at the Correctional Institute, which was a roaring success. The other one is Libraries on the Radio, and this is an ongoing radio show and a podcast hosted by three librarians, Justin Unrow, Emily Ohr, and Patrick Sebold. They have an hour-long program on chili, and it's a show, it's called Changes: The Show on Sustainability. And it has been really soundly appreciated by the community, and their work goes beyond just our local service area. They interview authors, librarians, they just have a range of discussions on the radio for their listeners. So it was, it was recognized as well. So I'm just really proud of the librarians that we have in Nanaimo. In particular, these two librarians have really made us proud of the kind of work that happens in our libraries here in Nanaimo. And on the Vancouver Island Regional Library runs from Suk to Haidequai, and we include all of the libraries in there, so it's quite significant.
Thank you very much. Councillor Pratt.
Thank you. I would just like to also say how pleased I was to see these awards being presented to people in Nanaimo through our library programs. I think we're seeing in the newspaper lately a lot of information on how libraries are having to become more innovative, how they're having to change what they're doing, putting their emphasis in different places and on education and community support. And our library is doing that, and I think we really need to be proud of the staff there and the initiatives that they have created to keep the Vancouver Island Regional Library viable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. See no further questions. Call the question. All's in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is down to 12 for delegations. The first delegation is Mr. Holden Southward regarding volunteering building skills for needed projects.
I don't see him here.
Mr. Holden, thank you. Next one is Mr. Nelson Allen regarding reconstruction of the Boundary Road, Northfield Road, Highway 19A intersection. Allen. If we can have your name and address for the record, they're fabulous.
Councillor, I can tell you that I was extremely excited when I came back from a trip and I...
Sir, can we have your name and address for the record, please?
Nelson Allen, 1253 Selkirk Drive.
Thank you.
And a member of this community since 1969. And I was really excited. I saw that sign on Boundary Road near Woodland School and the picture of the reconstruction. So I got my cell phone out, took a picture, and went home and studied it. And so after about 30 years, I thought, aha, we're going to have this done. Last year, I was very, very disappointed that it had been delayed again. And so I'm here now because I thought I was going to be able to come a couple of weeks ago, shortly after the May 9th, but I had made a mistake that I missed the cutoff, so I'm here. And I think I pressed a button or something. Do I? Done this before, but not this one? Okay. Well, I've done some research in addition to what I already knew, but I'm just putting up for your information the Island Corridor Foundation Funding Resolution to the Association of Vancouver Island Community Groups. And there's one that said we're going to get $7.5 million, which you already knew about. And then the Capital Regional District, and this is moved by Director Beswick, and it was a modified motion, as I can tell, that communities work with impacted First Nations municipalities, regional districts, and the ICF Board to conduct financial governance review, and that's probably a good idea. And then a couple more on the Island Foundation Corridor, moved by Director Hayme, and seconded that the corridor contribution agreement report we receive for information and report back in 60 days. And then by Director Kip and Director Fell, the regional board staff to notify other members of the corridor foundation of the regional district to know if it doesn't support the retention of continuation of the management group, I assume. So obviously, there are issues there that people are working on, and that's good. I did find this, I did watch this segment of the May 9 council and committee meeting, the segment that debated this. I watched it twice to make sure I didn't miss anything. And there was a lot of discussion about whether or not this particular intersection has a high accident rate or not. It does. It has, and it will continue to have. And there is the Daily News, back for brief resurrection, and that outlines that this is a very high accident area. And one of the worst intersections is Boundary Avenue, Northfield Road, and the highway that's been around for a number of years, and we've got to get those, get the province on board. That was the mayor, your worship, made that comment, and I agree totally with that. And what I wanted to concentrate my comments around was the staff report that came forward to council on May the 9th. And my first question I have about that is, why would a report be, is that up there or not? I may come back to that. Why would a report be made to council to request a delay on the project based on the issue of rail service when it's a fact that the rail service will be in place at that location in a year's time? The railway is there, it's been there for years, it will be there next year and years after. The debate of future of rail corridor will go on for some years, as it does for any complex, multi-jurisdictional project. There are blips along the way, yes, there's financing, but we think we have to hold the vision here. Now, the intersection needs to be upgraded now for safety for drivers, those on bikes and projections, and therefore there is no reasonable rationale for any delay, in my view, and I think a view shared by many in the community. Now, in the third paragraph of the staff report, it states that, quote, "The tender for the project was issued on March 11, 2016, and scheduled to close on May 18. Once it's closed, the city will have a contract with a low compliant bidder. The sole source purchase has not been made yet since it's necessary to know the tender values first to ensure project viability." My question is, how is it possible to put a project out for tender, have a closing date within nine days of the date of the report, and yet, quote, "Costs related to the rail crossing"? the rail crossing"? On page 2 of the report, it goes on to say that "The total potential costs related to the act of rail crossing are approximately $1.5 million, and the city's share would be half." Now, given the cost of an act of rail crossing would form part of the tender, one would assume, and would be the responsibility of the company submitting the tender to ascertain those costs of the tender, so why cancel the tender? It's like a catch-22 here. And, quote, go on, "The sole source purchase has not been made yet since it's necessary to know the tender value first to ensure project viability." Now, that's like a catch-22. I would think if I'm going to put a tender in, I would have all of the information. I would have talked to Southern Rail. I would have known that there might be additional costs to upgrade that crossing if we're going to have signals further up the track depending on the speed and so on. So I would like to know, was that done? And if not, why not? And did we get the information from Southern Rail or not? Now, three members of council voted to support the project at the May 9 meeting. Other council members were in support of solving the problem of this dangerous intersection, and waiting will not solve the problem. It'll make it more expensive. Now, with us currently in the B.C. pre-election cycle, we can expect the government will stand by their commitment of $7.5 million. And the city should now, as it hasn't been done, and hopefully we will meet the criteria, apply for a federal grant under the new infrastructure program, maybe to help out with the financing. And the close of Woodland School will not free up any property, if that was, in fact, any source of discussion, it wasn't part of that May 9 meeting that I heard, to do a redesign or disposition, because disposition of school district property follows a strict protocol that will take more than a year to complete. And that happens to, well, it's laid out pretty clearly by the government how that'll come about. So I feel, as many others feel, that council should complete this project this year, and this can be accomplished by a council member who voted in the affirmative on the motion of May 9 to move reconsideration of the motion at a subsequent meeting. And this should be done soon to meet the moral obligation of the council and to protect its citizens and to its commitment made years ago to complete this project. Thank you. Any questions?
I see no.
I'll just make one last comment, if I could, in the minute remaining. My interest in this comes from years ago, having represented Northfield East Wellington on a former council, and have been a chairperson of the Northfield Community Association, and worked to protect the zoning on the south side from commercial encroachment, while the north side zoning was broken quite often until the city finally got a good zoning bylaw. That intersection where my youngest daughter, making a left-hand turn, was hit by a driver coming down trying to make the light. And there are many accidents that happen there, and something needs to be done. The real challenge we have here is that we are sort of perched on the edge of a mountain with the water on one side, and we have Northfield, we have the ferry traffic coming in, turning left, it's got to get down to the parkway, as Counselor Kip pointed out in the last meeting, on that meeting, you've got people coming up or trucks making the turn on Northfield when they're not supposed to, because they don't want to hit the other lights to go forward. However, I don't think we're going to save any money. I'm assuming that there's money available in a capital reserve fund, and therefore, that money is not, it's money that's going to be allocated to another project. It might be an increased cost, but I don't think-- I may, in fact, submit some of my questions in writing to the staff so I can get a written response to those questions, which I deem important. Okay? Thanks very much.
Motion to receive a delegation. Moved by Counselor Brennan and seconded by Counselor Pratt. All is in favor. All is motion carries. Thank you. Next speaker is Ms. Melissa Tomlinson regarding climate change warning labels on gas pump nozzles. We need your name and address for the record, please.
Melissa Tomlinson, and 3617 Country Club Drive.
Thank you.
Good evening. And thank you for having us. As I said, my name's Melissa Tomlinson. I'm a member of VIU's Awareness of Climate Change through Education and Research, and a citizen of Nanaimo and a mother of a three-year-old. And she is the reason why I am here, and her future is why I care about climate change awareness. And this is Rob Shergy. He's the founder of Our Horizon, and we are here to discuss the idea of climate change risk disclosure labels on gas pump nozzles. Now, where does this idea fit? We live in a world where using fossil fuels is normalized, it is systemic. What the idea of putting climate change disclosure labels on gas pump nozzles does is to disrupt the status quo. There's an ideal place where we, as a society, need to be, where we are not as reliant on fossil fuels. This idea helps facilitate the transition from where we are to where we want to be. This is an example design ten plate here. It's discussing impacts. It could read caution, notice, or information. Then there would be a link to a local website, the City of Nanaimo website, with more information about what individuals can do and about local initiatives that the City of Nanaimo is doing to help mitigate climate change. Since launching this project in 2013, it has received over 100 endorsements from leaders in their fields and prominent academics from universities around North America. See the fullest of supporters, visit ourhorizon.org. We think the reason it has been getting so much support is because it is really compelling for these following reasons. Reason number one, climate change is a problem of no feedback. We burn fossil fuels today, and the effects are not felt until later in the future. In the absence of feedback, we fail to adjust our behavior. What this idea does is it brings faraway consequences and links them to our actions. It takes a problem with no feedback and builds feedback. Each of us emits a little bit of greenhouse gases, but collectively, we are altering the chemistry of our planet. Social psychologists call this a diffusion of responsibility, meaning it is shared among many. And when responsibility is shared among many, we are each less likely to act. What this idea does is it takes the responsibility and it literally places it in the palm of your hand. It locates the responsibility. It takes the problem of diffuse origins and locates responsibility. As simple as this idea is, I challenge you to think of something else out there that is like it, that connects us with the impacts of our fossil fuel use in quite a direct Climate change is a problem of externalities. Economists use the term "externalities" to describe costs experienced by the use of a product that are not reflected in the price. These are quantitative externalities, and governments have tried to capture these externalities with cap and trade and carbon tax. But what this idea does is to take the idea of externalities and instead of communicating them quantitatively in dollars and cents, it communicates them qualitatively in text and pictures. It takes the problem of externalities and communicates to the market the true cost of using the product in a simple way.
Thank you. So Melissa covered some of the thinking behind the idea, some of the theory. I'm going to pick up with impact. So what sort of an impact do we think it'll have? And a story that I tell to sort of illustrate it is, this was a little over a year ago that I was, so I used to live downtown Toronto. My mother lives uptown Toronto. We would often visit each other for breakfast. One morning, I visited her for breakfast, and I noticed that her gas gauge on the needle was close to empty. So I figured that during the course of the day, she's likely to gas up. So I suggested, how about I come over for dinner? We'll continue to hang out, and we'll enjoy each other's company. And my poor mother, you know, she thinks there's this wonderful child that's wanting to spend more and more time with her, but actually about to run this little experiment on her. In any event, so I show up that evening, and discreetly, I take her keys and I put it into the ignition of her vehicle, and I see that the gauge goes up to full. So I know that during the course of the day, she had gassed up. So I ask her how her day went, you know, where all did she go today, right? And she says, "Oh, I had a good day. I went to work, I got groceries, and then I came home." And I said, "Okay, did you by chance go anywhere else, even just for a moment, right?" You know, same story. She thinks about it, and she says, "No, I mean, I went to work, I got groceries, I came home." I said, "Did you get out of your car for any reason whatsoever, just even for a moment? Think hard about your day." And she pauses and she reflects, and you know, "No, I mean, I went to work, I got groceries, and I came home." Eventually, I asked her, "Did you by chance stop at a gas station?" And again, she pauses, she reflects, and she says, "Yeah, yeah, I did. Why?" And I think that story actually kind of captures a lot of the problem that we face. As Melissa mentioned, there's this systemic inertia to the status quo of fossil fuel-based economy, and especially on the demand side of the equation. The simple act of pumping gas is a completely habitual, automatic, normalized behavior that's just part of the everyday fabric of living. And as long as that's the situation downstream, you sort of have the perfect recipe to perpetuate the status quo. And so the impact that we're expecting is quite simply for the end user to say, "Well, but what am I supposed to do? What are my options?" And in causing, in disrupting the status quo and causing a little bit of dissatisfaction around it and having the end user question that, you're creating much, much more space for reform, so you'll see greater impetus for individual behavioral change. But you also see this collective shift in demand that creates more space for government to implement solutions to address the problem, and also incentivizes industry to deliver solutions to sort of meet that shift in demand. So that's kind of the concept in a nutshell. As Melissa mentioned off the top, you know, here's this place that we're stuck at, here's this place that we need to transition to. This is from the leading think tank on behavioral economics out of the United Kingdom, and they say, "Psychologists' theories on changing habits generally involve first unfreezing the subconscious action and raising it to a conscious level where we can consider the merits of alternative behaviors." So this piece that we're suggesting is critical to facilitate this overall transition. So where's the project at? It was in January of last year that the municipality of West Vancouver unanimously passed a resolution calling on all vendors of retail petroleum products in Canada to be legislated to provide these warning labels. And you ended up seeing youth across the country bring the idea forward. So lots of municipalities have endorsed it, several in Ontario, many here. Of course, you'll recall that the Association of Vancouver Island Coastal Communities, they received majority support last year, as well at the Union of British Columbia Municipalities in September. And then in November, you have North Vancouver that sort of look left, look right, said, "Well, everyone's saying we should do this. There's a legal report we developed that makes a compelling case for municipal jurisdiction, and it was reviewed by Livstone and Company, a local government firm in Vancouver. They reviewed it in-house with their in-house council as well." And eventually, they then passed it into law, and they became the first jurisdiction in the world to do it. Mayor Daryl Masato said after the vote, "It is 2015, and we need to talk about how we are going to move forward as a society on a reduced carbon or carbon-free diet, and it is going to be a challenge." And this label is sort of a catalyst for that conversation, sort of asking us to face this challenge. It was covered by media across the country, so CTV, Global News, CBC News, it was in The Globe and Mail, it was in City Labs, so a publication of The Atlantic, it was in Business Insider, this is Univision, so the number one Spanish network in the United States. A friend randomly was in Sweden and caught this headline, sent it to me. "Bensin macker far warningstekster om klima till tett." I can't speak Swedish, but these examples, you know, they're all over. That's from the number one daily paper in the Netherlands. And the idea is to take it global. So the top map has, we got this off a tobacco control website, I think it's a little bit out of date, but in any event, the concept of these tobacco warnings exists all over the world. The bottom map is some analytics from a website that was hosting our content. So we're already actually getting emails from other countries asking us about this thing. And over the last several months, we've had close to 100 Canadians volunteering their time from coast to coast, going to government websites all over the world to copy and paste email addresses of politicians into a massive global database that we now have. It was actually earlier today that we bombarded Latvia. We sent Latvia a whole bunch of emails to their legislators with this idea. And so this is something we're wanting to share with the world. The good news is actually just, I think, a week or two ago, about two weeks ago, Sanich, their council, voted unanimously to explore local implementation of the idea, and I can put you in touch with some people there. And we're asking Nanaimo to do the same. So we're not asking right now, you know, to pursue this and pass it into law, but we're asking you to direct staff to explore the idea, explore local implementations of it, see if it's right for Nanaimo. And if you come to the same conclusion that I do, hopefully Nanaimo will be an early adopter that'll provide an example for the world to follow. And I think if you can make the problem of climate change a little more tangible, a little more proximate, you're creating this ideal social environment for reform that then will drive change upstream and then will actually address this issue in a meaningful way. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Thorpe has a question for you.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Thank you for your presentation. Very well done. You made a comparison to the warning labels on cigarettes, and those warning labels, of course, are a federal initiative. Is there thought to taking this campaign to the federal level? And if there has been, have you had any success there?
We've reached out to the federal government. I sent a letter to Catherine McKenna, the Minister of the Environment and Climate Change, and also our Prime Minister Justin Trudeau, in advance of the Paris COP21 meeting in December. I recently reached out to them again, and we're hoping to get a meeting with them. The example that I sort of, you know, hope the trajectory that this follows comes from the story of Hudson, Quebec, where this community, several years ago, 5,000 in Quebec, passed a bylaw that was unprecedented across Canada at the time, banning or heavily regulating the use of cosmetic pesticides in people's yards. And what ended up happening, so there's this legal story of where it was challenged, and eventually the town was vindicated, so the bylaw was upheld by the courts. But what's interesting is neighboring communities said, "Oh, well, look at what Hudson did. You know, we should do this too." And then another one implemented it, and so on and so on. Eventually, the entire province of Quebec stepped in and, you know, made this law apply uniformly across the province. And now you've got more than 80% of Canadians that live in a jurisdiction where there's either a municipal bylaw or a provincial law that can actually be traced back to decision of just three people in this town of Hudson. So our hope is, in getting some examples, successful examples of either implementation or, you know, this resolution and support at the local level, you're then creating the space where then it's much, much easier for other orders of government to implement the concept as well.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Fuller. You mentioned North Vancouver and Sanich. Are they the only two communities that have done that, this municipalities?
So North Vancouver, they passed it into law. It was November 16 of 2016, and they're now in the design and implementation phase.
Couldn't have been 2016. We haven't reached November yet.
Excuse me, 2015. That's correct. Thank you for that. And so in terms of councils that have directed staff to explore implementation, so there's Sanich, Tofino, Parksville. In Ontario, Vaughan actually recently directed staff to explore implementation. Also, London and Barry. And we're going to be moving this forward shortly in Pickering and a couple of other municipalities where we're optimistic that they'll, you know, give similar direction to staff. So it's certainly, I mean, it's an idea that we've been advocating for for about three years now. I think, like many new ideas, it takes a while for it to sort of catch. But I do think now there's a broader social consensus among local governments that this is something that's worthwhile. I mean, Ontario, for example, Kitchener, Waterloo, Oakville, Guelph, Pickering, and I'm missing one, have all passed resolutions in support. So I think it's inevitable then that slowly more and more will get on with actual implementation.
Yeah, that answers a couple of questions that I was going to ask you, actually. I think it's a great idea. I'd like the ones with the reindeer on them, but we don't have reindeer in Nanaimo, so I guess we'd have to settle for the one that you guys showed us. But I really think it's a great idea. And I'd be willing to make a motion to direct staff to bring back a report. However, our staff are so inundated with reports right now, and we've got the quarter review coming up that we want to implement strategic priorities. But so I don't know how I would go about this, because staff are inundated with reports, but I want them to keep this on their radar. So I'm hoping that just by saying this, staff will keep it on their radar. And feel free to throw us emails and ask us how it's going, because I think it's a great idea. I'd like to do it tomorrow, but I doubt I could get the support right now, because people wouldn't want to look into it. And I-- And I encourage them to check out the Our Horizon website. It's quite good. I've got it here right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and one option, if I may, is not so much to develop a report, but to the extent I mentioned a few municipalities, so maybe just even a chat, just to kind of, and then again, keep you apprised. So nothing formal, but.
Yeah. Thank you. Counselor Pratt.
Thank you for your report. I really enjoyed it. I do believe this is a good idea. I love that it is an initiative that's really been grabbed by the youth because I think they're the ones that are going to be impacted the most by what we're doing in terms of the environment. And we're not always making good choices, and we certainly haven't made good choices in the past, and that will impact future generations. So to me, any message that can get out there that raises consciousness is a good one. It's timely for our Bike to Work Week that you're here today. I have a couple of questions. One is, you mentioned something about gas stations doing this and that, is it North Band that has passed?
They've passed it into law, and they're, I don't know.
It's a bylaw that they have instituted.
It's a bylaw now.
And what, and that directs gas stations to do this in their area?
Yes, that's correct.
And?
It's through their licensing powers under the Canadian Charter here in B.C.
So it's actually going to be the financial responsibility of the gas stations to do it?
Yes. And so my background, actually, so I'm a lawyer. I actually went to law school here in B.C., but practice in Ontario now. And so, you know, I'm more qualified to speak to the Ontario context. But of course, in a licensing regime, so long as the costs are, quote, reasonable and cover the cost of implementation, so not beyond that, they can then be passed on to the license holder. So the good news is, fortunately, with this suggested intervention, it's quite, it's not that costly at all. It's just, you know, sort of a sticker, and some hoses that aren't yet fitted with this plastic sleeve cost about $16. So we think that that's something that the retailer can pick up.
So just to follow up on that, then. So the costs aren't huge. It will be very interesting to see how, what kind of response you get at the federal level because, to me, it makes sense if Canada is really on the bandwagon of trying to develop some environmental initiatives, that this is certainly one that would be easy enough to implement right across the country. It is going to be a challenge, and it would also then be really interesting, and whether I live to see this or not is debatable, but I'd love to see the stats on this 20 years from now, just to see, or even 10 years from now, if we're able to implement it. But I do think it's a good idea. I think it's a bright idea, and I'm really going to be following this to see how things unfold. Counselor Fuller is right. Our staff are inundated right now with an awful lot of work, and so I don't see us necessarily doing anything immediately, but it's something we definitely want to keep on the radar. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Brennan.
Thank you. Ms. Tomlinson, you came to the Advisory Committee on Environmental Sustainability. Didn't, yeah, just in the fall, perhaps, was it? Spring of last year? OK. So the Environmental Committee did take this presentation, and we referred it to our staff for a report. I think that the Environmental Committee themselves were looking for some kind of grassroots movement, and so I would suggest that might be another initiative on your part would be perhaps to do that. I also am wondering if maybe a presentation to one of the larger gas station outlets in town, the Mid-Island Co-op Gas Stations, might be a good idea to kind of gauge the temperature of the business community around that, their progressive business and progressive board. But my memory says that this has not yet come back to the city council, this report from the Environmental Committee, from our environmental staff. So we are, I think, you have found us in a little bit of limbo land because the committees have all been put on pause and have been since January, I think. So we are not likely to see a report come back from our staff and our committee until such time as there's a decision whether there's going to be an environmental committee. So you're kind of in, as I say, limbo land, but I can tell you that the Environmental Committee was looking for some grassroots support, and that might be an initiative you want to take if you wanted to move this through council.
Thank you. Counselor Bestrick.
Thank you, guys, for your presentation and appreciate the dedication to the cause. In your delegation request, there's no contact information. Is that something that we have on file? Just, so it's a question to staff. Do we have their contact information?
Yes, to your staff.
And if not, because, could you make sure that we get their contact information to make further contact with you outside of this presentation? Please, I'd like to communicate with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Yocum.
Thank you. Sorry, Dave. No. OK. So I'd like to thank you both for your presentation. I think it's definitely the avenue we have to go. I like Counselor Fuller's idea where if we could move something right today, I don't need a committee, I don't need anything to say, let's go forward. It's the right thing to do, it's the just thing to do. On the weekend, my six-year-old was telling me how we gotta make the world better, and this is a small step, but it's such a key step. And whoever, and we don't need the gas stations, I don't believe, to say, well, can we make their bylaws? I don't know what I'm asking here. Like, did in the city say this is mandatory? Like, if fast food haven U.S. can put calories on their menus, which would, now, that'd be unheard of, we can definitely do something like this, like, if we do that in the States, we can be equally or more progressive on such a good cause. So I would be definitely willing to champion committee or not. Like, this is the right thing to do. I don't even need to discuss this. And I didn't discuss it, I mean, but like, let's just do the right thing. I look forward to, we gotta make this place a better place. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Semer.
I just wanted to say, certainly, it's on the radar, so we can take that away and make sure that this doesn't get missed. And then I just wanted to draw counsel's attention. Over the last couple of weeks, I've provided several briefings on the committees and alerted you to the fact that on June 6, senior management recommendations as to the committee structure will be coming in front of counsel for their consideration. So we're aware that we were waiting for the end of the core services review before we could make final recommendations on the committee structure, but they are ready to go, and they're put into the queue, and counsel have them in front of them very soon.
Thank you very much. I see no further questions. Thank you very much. Motion to receive the delegation. Moved by Counselor Thorpe, seconded by Counselor Pratt. Thank you. Call of question. All's in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is Ms. Maureen Eichel and Boom, I hope I got that correct, regarding Boomer's Legacy, B.C. Ride.
Good morning, Councilors. Thank you. Boomer's Legacy began in 2006 when my son Andrew was killed in Afghanistan. And he was a medic, and I knew as soon as he was killed that I needed to do something to help make a difference. It was like you said, it's OK, Mom, I'm in a better place. Now do something for my buddies. What do you do? Over 40,000 military members were deployed. That's one in every 900 Canadians. And there's 68,000 military members in Canada. So if you think you're distanced from it, you're not. Somebody you know somewhere is connected. Andrew was 23. He was a medic. He went to save lives. Afghanistan was difficult. I thought he would come home knowing everything about fixing feet, sprained ankles, dehydration. Whether it was a Canadian military member or an Afghan, he looked after them, or a Taliban. It didn't matter. It was a person who needed medical care, and that's what he did. The economy of that country, the contrast between the poppies, the desert, the poverty, the drugs, the reality of what our Canadian soldiers endured. They had tents. They didn't put them up because it was too hot. You checked your boots because there were scorpions in them. In one phone call home, Andrew said, Mom, even the street people in Canada have more than anybody in the village I've been in. I assume it was this village, a refugee camp. I thought this young boy would say when he grew up, a Canadian soldier gave me something nice, and because of him, our country is free. Unfortunately, that isn't going to happen. But I do believe our troops made a difference, whether it was the young girls. And the reality is that that moon that sets over our mountains is the same moon that sets over the mountains in Afghanistan, and it's not that far away. And whether our troops are in Afghanistan or in Iraq or in Iran or Sri Lanka, looking after Ebola clinics, wherever, they are somewhere doing something to help. And that is what Boomer's Legacy is about, is helping others, helping our soldiers, sorry, help others, whether at home or abroad. Boomer caps also got started by friends of mine. To date, over 480,000 hand-knit caps, many from the Nanaimo Quilting Group, have been shipped overseas and all over the world, warming heads of little children. So it seemed funny putting a Boomer cap on a child's head when it was 52 degrees out. But it isn't always. Funds were used to purchase a sheep so that a village could continue because the sheep were all blown up with an IED. Funds were used for birthing clinics, teaching midwives, young girls. Journal on the Tinchik in Jamaica, where funds were used for a technical school. Funds were used in Jamaica, or, sorry, in Haiti, where our medics and other U.N. troops gathered together and ended up doing some major things for the schooling, for the kids in schools, and building medical clinics. Vancouver Island Compassion Dogs, which is out of Qualcomm Beach, has now received 20,000 from Boomer's Legacy. And that was, that's Andrew. So on June 11, cyclists will be riding once again through this community. And we have been doing this, literally, since 2007, the first cyclist rode up, and that's how Bike Ride started. He rode up, a military member who was one of Andrew's COs, rode up from Victoria to Comox because he'd just been stationed in Victoria, and after all, it wasn't that far. He learned different. And that spearheaded at that gala Bike Rides. I would never have dreamed that I would be on a road bike. And I like seeing that you have Bike Week to Work Week. It's cool. Anyway, we will be here at the Northfield Road rest stop at about 3:30 on June 11. We will be at the Harwood Legion at between 6:30 and 7:00 for the evening, and I would like to invite any of you out to come and meet with the riders. On our Bike Ride, every fallen military member is remembered, Tim's son-in-law as well. And it is what we do. In the past, we have had RCMP auxiliary members support the full way. Because of the way the auxiliary members have not been as active, we can't have that support anymore, so we will be riding rules of the road. But any support that we could have from any police on that day coming through Nanaimo would be greatly appreciated. And I thank you. Any questions?
Thank you very much. I see no questions.
I'd just like to make a comment.
Comment from Counselor Pratt.
Maureen, thank you so much for coming. I remember your son, and I, I think it's wonderful what has come out of that tragedy and that you are doing something that brings some kind of meaning to the loss that you've suffered and that your family has suffered. So there's a lot of ways that we can support you, for sure. And certainly, this seems like something that is pretty simple. So I'm hoping that we can at least talk to people around this ride coming through and what we're able to do to keep people safe while that's happening.
Anybody who wants to come out and join us to ride in from Northfield into the Armory or ride out the next morning, please feel free.
So did you say it's June 11? That's a Saturday?
11th. The ride, we leave Comox the morning of June 11, and we stay overnight at the Armory. Everybody sleeps on army cots. And we arrive in at the Legislative Ground, 4:30-ish on the Sunday.
Thank you. Counselor Fuller. You mentioned needing support from the RCMP. So we have a bike unit in Nanaimo, and you might want to contact Superintendent Mark Fisher and see if perhaps a couple of their unit could ride along with you once you get into Nanaimo. I think that'd be really cool. I think they would jump at the chance if they're not extremely busy, but I think they would.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Motion to receive the delegation. Counselor Thorpe, followed by Counselor Kep. Call of question. All's in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, Mr. Patrick Squire regarding the current and past maintenance practices at Bowen Road Cemetery.
Afternoon, and Pat Squire.
Thank you.
Your honor, Councilors. I come here today to draw attention to a matter that, buddy, I've shown, totally unaware of. So the other, two weeks ago, yesterday was Mother's Day. Went down to the cemetery to put flowers there, and the staff had eliminated a planting I had between the two headstones. There was pansies there, there was mums, things like that. So it was stripped to the bare earth. There seems to be a policy within the maintenance of the cemetery that has put above what the reason for the cemetery was, the resting place for people that are passed away and for those that are still alive. It's a shame that we've lost this balance or this meaning of what the cemetery was meant to be. But this practice, to me, is only a symptom of a larger issue that has gone on in secret, unbeknownst, to probably everybody here and everybody that I've showed was unaware. And what made me spur on this was, there was an article, sorry, you don't have a copy of this one, in April 19, in the local bulletin. And the headline reads Cemetery Safeguards Secrets. And you have your curator from the local museum here, Amy, the reporter, and I have to forget, you know, that they probably are totally unaware, knowing their age and what they're up to. The headline to me should have read more like Cemetery Hides Dark Secrets or City Policy Removes Cemetery Monuments. There is, there's been an unfortunate city practice for decades, stripping out monuments, edging stones, orange stones, headstones and everything, and dumping them. So if I could have the first photograph, please? We have here a collection. I accessed these ones. I knew that this dumping happened about seven, eight years ago. In that period of time, the bush has taken over, the blackberries have overgrown them. And like a lot of things, loss must be distributed. When I saw this article, went in, knew roughly where they were, cleared my way through the blackberries and opened up this area, because you blackberries, and opened up this area, because you couldn't see them, like this. There is another shot of the same grouping. Now, to detail these more, I go to this first one here. Here we have Sarah McCullough, from the city records, born in 1902, born in Russia, died April 24th, 1955, here in Nanaimo, aged 53. This one, Donald M. McCabe, you can see quite clearly on there, born 1889, died 1952. That gentleman died in Ladysmith. Other names, back, you can see one there says Lillian. The remainder of that stone is over beside Sarah McCullough's one. The one off to the left of the screen has Bradley on it. The one on the right has Williams. It's a little hard to tell because parts are missing. This one here, in the center, the large granite cross, is a very significant monument. It's quite large, it's hard to tell in this photograph. It's over four and a half feet tall, about a little under two foot at the cross, and it's seven inches thick. You can see the stylized knot at the cross itself. And what, in the next picture, there is an inscription at the bottom of this. When I first uncovered these, I couldn't see that, and I had to clear the moss off to find this. What it says on there, well, you can see Memorial, and it says Workman of the World. This one was harder to track down. I went to the city records, I tracked the archives, I talked to Jim and Eve LaManley, I talked to Sue Kriba, talked to our MLAs office, talked to Larry Gamboni, he's a very interesting local historian, written a book here on local labor history here in the first part of the last century. Even contacted the descendants, a big John Hawthorne weight, who was an early labor leader of this province. Online, I found a few details of reference to this one, that it was a movement to get workers an eight-hour day, somewhere from about the middle of the 1880s up to about 1905. And then there was evolution of movements and unions and everything like that. But this one, the city has no record. So we've lost the context it was. Was it on somebody's headstone? Was it with a grouping of other people? We don't know that one. This one here, it's a marble obelisk, which in moving it there, they broke it in half. It's an impressive piece of stone. It, it's over six foot tall, this one, going from a base of 12 inches to the bottom, to eight inch, or 12 inches, eight inches to the top, with a further point on that. It's a beautiful reddish-brown marble. I looked around the cemetery, that type of stone obviously was popular one time, because there's several other bases of that same type of stone, and I finally matched to the one, I think, because on the tops, you could see, some of them have larger sculptures or whatever on the top somehow, round ones, whatever. This one, I think, belongs to a Price Thomas, native of North Wales, died December 8th, 1890, aged 62 years. This gentleman could have been one of the first miners that ever came to this town. So, it seems a tragedy that these monuments to honor receivers to the people has been treated like garbage, thrown out like that. This is the only tip, these items are only the tip of the iceberg. If you could refer to the map that I had the staff pass out there earlier, which shows you plan view of the cemetery. You may not know, even if you're on council, all the property that people think is the cemetery is not actually zoned for the cemetery. There is, the section where that computer-generated Craig Street should actually bend further, the actual cemetery office, and that lane is a road right away, and the city owns six lots in there. And buried in there are tons and tons of headstones, monuments, grave markers, edging stones, and everything. There have been former governments that made bad policies. As Al Gore would say, "This is an inconvenient truth." It's time for us to resurrect these, give them the respect that they deserve. The monuments are already there, you own the lands, you don't even have to acquire something up. They could be brought up, even if they can't be repatriated, to the exact spot they went in the cemetery. Give them a respectful spot to be, a place that we say, "These people were important." There was a trust that these people had in us. And that trust has been violated. None of us were part of this, but we can be part of the solution. We can be part of setting this right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have some questions, please, and thank you for bringing this awareness, definitely to myself. Counsel Kip?
Pat, thank you very much for bringing this to our attention. If you, if you don't recognize dying in our world, or those grave sites, it really takes away from who we are. And I appreciate the fact that you dug this up. As a young child, I cruised to that area, I never realized that that stuff was happening. I think it's become an easy maintenance issue for people. It sounds like they can just mow over the grave sites and not get out of the tractor. And I think this council will hopefully make that change. And I hate to say it, but when I travel, we go to graveyards. We go to graveyards all over Europe, all over the places in the States. When I go Halifax, I travel to graveyards. They're important sites, absolutely important sites, and I hope we'll get this fixed. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. Amen.
The final point, I, yesterday, I was in my backyard, and a lady in my neighborhood that I'd never met before, we got talking at the fence, and she was saying she was heading up to the cemetery, she walks through there, she lives in the cul-de-sac right across from Fairview School.
Yeah.
And I said, "Well, that's interesting, I'm doing a presentation council tomorrow." And she's lived on that cul-de-sac for close to 35 years. And I told her what I was going to be presenting, and she was, she had noticed things disappearing over the years. And she thought people were stealing them. I said, "No, that's not the case." The case, they were taken out and dumped unceremoniously in the bank, and if you go back there, these ones are the easiest to access. Like, today, I walked down, just to reflect on this before I came up. I'm standing there, and there's piles of dirt, and I can see the corner of a large baseball sticking out of the dirt, under the rambles, and then even down towards the cemetery office, if you get underneath, you can see the ones that are closer to the surface. There is loads of them in there. And it's a shame that that's where they're placed.
I've got a list here, Mr. Squire, so just bear with me, please, thank you. Counsel Beswick?
My own?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Squire, thank you for bringing this to our attention. It's extremely disturbing, and I trust that in the very near future, this council will direct staff to address this travesty swiftly. And as you note, it's extremely important and crucial that we acknowledge those that have come before us. And all I can say is, I hope that we act responsibly, and now, and do the responsible thing. And without you bringing this to our attention, that may never have had the opportunity to happen. So thank you for that.
I thank you for consideration.
Counsel Fuller?
Thanks, Pat. I love cemeteries. I'm one of those weird people that loves to walk in the cemeteries, to look at the stones. And that cemetery in particular, I used to walk through quite freak, quite often back in the 80s. I lived on Harvey Street for a little while, and I had friends up in that area. And there was, last fall, sometime around October, there was something happening in Nanaimo, and I thought, "What a great vantage point." So I went to check this out from the cemetery, because you can see the downtown. And I noticed a lot of the stuff had gone from 20, 30 years ago. And it didn't dawn on me that anybody would think it was okay to dump it in the dirt and let it grow over. I mean, this is our history. This is the history of Nanaimo. And when we treat our history that way, that says something about us as a community. I'm abhorred at this, and I want staff to look at this, I want something done about this. And, you know, I would like to see those stones dug up and saved. And if you take all five, six of those freaking lots, flatten them, and put the stones on there so that people can see them, that would suit me quite fine. And if you want to move any more stones, you bring them to those six lots, whatever. I want something done about this. This is sad. This is just, yeah.
Because I believe we're better than this.
I've got a couple more, sir. And thank you. Good for now, Gord?
Yeah.
Thank you. Counsel Pratt?
I echo what has been said here. I have to say that this is disturbing on many, many levels. It is about history, but more than that, it's about personal history, and families, and memories. And so, you know, I, I mean, I've been in Europe, and in England, and done some tramping through graveyards, looking for ancestral graves, and it's always very interesting. And what I've noticed is, and it was interesting, because when we went over this last time, a very large gravestone that represents our family in Scotland was starting to fall over. I mean, it'd been there for over 100 years, and, in fact, more than 100 years back into the 1800s. And, and so there was a notice on it from the, from the graveyard people, saying, if, you know, if you want to, this is going to probably be laid down, because it's getting to be a danger to other people. So I understand the challenges in graveyards today, but everything that was is removed or laid down is done so in a very respectful way, either they're along the fence line so people can still see them. So there is a solution to this problem, and my goodness, this is, I can't even imagine somebody walking by this and seeing this and not being disturbed by it. So there are a few questions we need to ask to find out where that kind of a policy came from, and, and what our policy is today around, you know, the headstones and, and removing them. Maybe the obelisk was broken, and that's why they moved it to that spot. Maybe it got broken moving to that spot, it's hard to say. I don't think there's any good reason to just dump in a pile. And so I really do want to appreciate, or I want to say how much I appreciate you bringing this to our attention, because it's important, it's just important.
I talked to Chris Schoenberg about this. Chris has been around for a while, and he said, for lack of a better word, there was a thing to parkify or something. I, for him, I found out you have a new staff member, Charlotte Davis, who's been around for years. Unfortunately, she's on maternity leave, so I haven't had an opportunity to talk to her, and about the minor issues of maintenance and stuff, but this, to me, is the bigger one.
Thank you, Mr. Squire. Glad Counsel Hong.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Mr. Squire, for bringing this to our attention. Unlike some of my other fellow counselors, I'm scared of cemeteries. I don't love going to them. I don't want to go to them, but I do for the respect of the elders, and to visit and pay respect. Don't think I'm going to be drunk running through a cemetery. So you won't see me doing that, but cemeteries are very important. Being from the Chinese descent, we pay respect, and we take pride and care in taking, looking after the cemeteries that have our elders in there. So I, I find this really disturbing, that I get, conditions get worse, but they should be documented, taken down with respect, and stored anywhere other than thrown on the ground so they can deteriorate more. Put them in a garden shed. Anything is better than what has happened. So I'm looking forward to the discussion that we're going to have after, sir, that we're going to do something about this. Like I said, I think this is not looking good on the people that came before us, and the respect that we pay to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Hong. I have Counsel Brennan.
Here. Thank you, Mr. Squire, for bringing this to us. It's a, it's a really important issue for the city of Nanaimo, and it is, I think, particularly important for our heritage. So it was, it was with a lot of expectation that I, I waited for your report tonight, because I wondered what it was about, and whether it was about the way that we care for the cemeteries now. I'm not a big fan of the way that we're caring for our cemeteries, or whatever policy we are using, it's, it's not one that I, I like. I like the European style of the overgrown and the moss, and a friend was, had just been to Pere Lachaise in Paris, and it's, it's truly one of the wonders of Paris, is to go to that cemetery. In fact, little-known piece of information, the Lizard King Morrison is, is laid to rest there, and there's always a guard. And I think during the summer, there's two guards on his, on his grave, because we recognize how important it is to look after our cemeteries. So I really want to see, I want to find out what happened, I don't want to jump to a conclusion. And I'm not suggesting you are, I'm just saying, for us as a council, hold back a little bit, let's find out what happened, and, and let's make it right. And then I really would like to see us develop a policy on cemetery maintenance, and, what was the other word? Just, just the, yeah, the maintenance of it, and how we let things grow in a cemetery. I'd like to see us change our ideas on that. So I sincerely appreciate you bringing this to us tonight.
Just make one last point.
Absolutely.
Thing about it, it's a reflection of who's still here, too.
Yes.
The policy of stripping out everything is a bleak place. There's not much expression there. There seems to be a line even the maintenance people won't cross. There's a grave in the south end of the cemetery, along Hur Street there, of a young boy that died, he was about eight years old. He's been dead for close to 18 years. But the staff doesn't touch that one. There are little whirlygigs, there's toys, there's shells, there's a couple of packages of bulbs.
Wow.
And that family never forgets him.
Mm-hmm.
There's flowers there last week. That's 18 years later. So that tells you something about who's still around. But that's not allowed anywhere else. Somehow, they don't touch that one. But that's a separate day-to-day maintenance thing. So thank you very much.
Oh, sorry, sir, there's a couple more speakers. Are you, is that okay?
Sorry?
There's a couple more speakers for you?
Sure, sure.
Thank you. Good for now, Counsel Brennan?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Victor?
The, I was just been corresponding here with the CEO on the matter. It's, it's a sensitive matter, as, as we sit and listen. Two things for us to consider is probably going to be policy and procedure, so we can make the necessary corrections. We don't necessarily need counsel to give us any direction. This is one we will take and, and see if we can action that as quickly as we can. Thank you.
Great, that's great. I'm sorry, sir?
No.
Thank you. Counselor Thorpe?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Mema, for that information, and thank you, Mr. Squire, certainly, as others have said, for bringing this to our attention. Very disturbing, and without wanting to, to jump to conclusions, it's something we certainly want to investigate and find out about, and I share the concern expressed by other counselors. I do recall that about a year ago, a family approached Counselor Pratt and I regarding re-establishing a headstone so it could be visible for the family. And we were able to work with our city staff, and in fact, alter the bylaw to make that possible. So I'm sure that we can examine this situation, and if there's changes that need to be made, we can make them, and we'll certainly look at doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Just also, final comment there, Mr. Squire, we'd like to again echo counsel's words, and thank you for bringing this forward, and coming, being part First Nations, coming from respecting the other.
being part of First Nations, coming from respecting the other world as well, that this, these, these families that are in those six lots or the, or the plots that are being a little bit vandalized or stuff items taken from could leave the family in that, in that spirit world and, uh, not resting, not at peace in their journey. So, um, it's very key we take care of, uh, the situation and, and these people deserve it. So thank you very much for coming forward. And I was very pleased to hear your, uh, resolution, Victor. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Oh, motion to receive the delegation moved by councillor Thorpe, seconded by councillor Kip or Pratt. Your call. I'm going to get in that one.
Your worship?
Um, next on delegation, we, oh, sorry.
Your worship, I will say that, um, Mr. Holden Southward is here. So he probably, um, he is here now and that was one of the first ones. So after the next, um, one, he should be fit in.
We'll go with councillor Kip. Is there any go 12G then to Mr. Southward to follow?
Thank you.
Yeah, he'll go after the next one. So at this time, I'd like to call forward, uh, Mr. Dieter.
You need to call the question.
Oh, question? All in favor? Passed from last delegation. My chairing skills are a little bit rough for the moment, but I'll, I'll get my game going here. Next, next I'd like to call forward Mr. Dieter. Is it Ree, Ray?
Yeah.
Yes, please, sir. Thank you.
Ree?
Thank you, sir. You have ten minutes and name and address, please, sir.
Name is Dieter Ree, thirty-two sixty-three Granite Park Road here in Nanaimo. And it has to do with our current noise by law. Uh, where I'm living, uh, is at the granite slope and there's construction going on, uh, quite noisily. And I know they have to dig through granite. Granite is hard. It makes a racket. Uh, it takes away from what is actually sort of as the opener by noise by law here. It indicates we should, uh, we should, it should be such that we can enjoy peace and quiet and just the pleasure of living here. Um, and the way I've put it together is, uh, I was told that this construction might be going on for yet another two years. Uh, especially concerning right now because you're getting into summer, uh, windows are left open in the house because it's nicer that way. We like to sit outside, maybe have a glass of wine or something like this. And in the meantime, uh, construction noise is going on. And it's not so much that, uh, sort of, as we say, nimbly, not in my backyard. This is not where, the way I'm looking at it. Uh, Nanaimo's a growing city. Uh, there will be more construction going on, uh, for residential as well as for business. Um, but I think what perhaps should be considered that the current bylaw, uh, which is still dated nineteen ninety-four, perhaps was still appreciated by people, by families that would go to work ten, twelve, and fourteen hours a day, uh, which is not what we are today anymore. And, uh, to give you an idea, this, uh, in the actual noise, noise by law, under paragraph three, general provisions, it says no person shall make, cause, or permit to be made any noise or sound in, on, on a highway or elsewhere in a private or public place in the municipality which disturbs or tends to disturb the quiet, peace, rest, enjoyment, comfort, or convenience of the neighborhood or persons in the vicinity. Sounds wonderful. It's a good scheme. It's a good plan. However, uh, when we then go into the interpretations or what we do with it, uh, this doesn't really quite work anymore. Um, for instance, I've gone through and says there's a bylaw enforcement officer. Great. But this bylaw enforcement officer, I found out, really has no, as we say, no teeth. Uh, we don't have owned by the city any noise, um, measuring devices that the city owns. And I was asked, I asked why? Because they cost money. And that officer also would be, would have to be sent away for training on that. So consequently, we don't have that. So therefore, uh, it is up to the contractor to decide what is noisy and what is not, what is acceptable and what is not. Now, I'm not trying to sort of kick the contractor in the shins. If there are no rules, he will have to get his job done as fast as he can. And I think the, the one thing that we could do in Nanaimo that we could change, at least would be the first thing before we're going by sensing equipment, um, it says for instance, things that cannot be done, erecting, demolishing, constructing, reconstructing, altering, or repairing any building or, or other structure within the municipality, or excavating on any street, highway, lane, or other land before seven AM and after nine PM Monday to Saturday, before nine AM and nine PM Sunday and statutory holidays. Sundays and statutory holidays that late? So my suggestion would be that we change this in the following way. Erecting, demolishing, constructing, reconstructing, altering, and repairing of any building or other structure, or excavating on any street, highway, lane, or other land in non-residential areas within the municipality before nine AM and after nine PM Monday to Saturday, and before nine AM and after seven PM Saturdays, Sundays, and statutory holidays. So these should be the limitations. Within that, the contractor can't do anything. Then I would continue with this. Erecting, demolishing, constructing, reconstructing, altering, and repairing of any building and, and other structure, or excavating any street, highway, lane, or other land in or near a residential neighborhood in a municipality before seven AM and after five PM Monday to Friday, and before nine AM or after five PM on Saturday. No work to be done on Sunday and statutory holidays. And I think that should actually work because we live here. And again, please don't misunderstand. This is not where I'm staying, not in my backyard. But the problem is, uh, a lot of the, the territory in Nanaimo is hard rock. And for hard rock, it requires drilling. And even, and there's a, there's a special little section in here also about drilling, uh, and, uh, blasting, uh, that has to be limited. But even once that is done, the carting away of the rock, uh, the digging away at it, okay, that all disturbs, excuse me, that disturbs the peace and quiet. And I do believe that something should be done in that. Um, I don't know how this sort of works, how council works this, how this is done. Um, but I've spoke to our neighbors in the area and everybody says, mm, okay, I'm gonna go and talk to city council. So that's why I'm here. So, uh, my request would be, as I said, whichever way you do that, uh, to look at what I've got on these pieces of paper that each one of yous have, uh, with the new limitations that I've put on there for contractors, and especially when it comes to that, please come on. No Sunday and statutory holidays. Give me a break. This is all the time I'd like to take.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you for.
Any questions for the delegation? Councillor Pratt?
I have, I just have one comment and it's, um, the staff would have to look at this. Um, I would like to know what the implications of this is in terms of other bylaws that we have around construction, roadwork, all of those kinds of things. Um, I understand that, you know, people do need to be able to live in their homes and do need to, at some point during the day, get away from the noise that's around them when it is there temporarily. Uh, looks like we have a staff member coming in here. So I would certainly like to look at this issue. Um, some of this doesn't seem that unreasonable to me, but I would certainly like to have staff's take on it, um, eventually to see whether there's something that we can do around this.
If you allow me, in the same context, another comment. Uh, the situation with noise sensing equipment. Okay, the equipment is one thing, but who decides what appropriate noise is and what inappropriate noise is? So that is very difficult to regulate. But I think what is easy to regulate is the times within which noise can be made and absolutely is not to be made. And then you can send out a, uh, bylaw officer, uh, or peace officer because that is mentioned in the bylaw and say, okay, you guys can do that. So I think...
So just to follow up on that, um, you know, I imagine there are certain kinds of works that the noise is just unavoidable. It has to be done, whether it's drilling into, you know, for pipes or infrastructure or even for construction. So we do need to maybe look at that. And some places, we're probably not going to be able to make any changes, but the time limits definitely seem to be, um, something that might be more manageable. And, uh, I'd like to see that.
It would be great if, if that could be looked at. Um, one thing that also goes with it, uh, in certain areas where a certain portion of a neighborhood, and I'm, I'm talking neighborhood specifically, industrial is a different story. We could say, well, that is far enough away. It does not necessarily disturb me. I know they're working, okay? But it's the neighborhood. Uh, what probably could also come into the picture, if, let's say, a neighbor had a, a larger piece of property, now he wants to sell it. I understand he wants to make money with it. At the same time, because there's so many neighbors around it, there's certain work that probably then cannot be done. And I'm not talking seismic work. That is on my next presentation on some other day. But, um, it is, it is not easy, but something I believe really should be done, should be looked at, uh, if one could make, at least on weekends, later evening, could enable it.
Thank you.
Please.
Thank you very much. Councillor Bestrick?
Thank you. Um, this is not a question for the delegation. So if you wish to, uh, receive the delegation.
Do you like to make that motion?
Move to receive the delegation, please.
Seconded, seconded by councillor Pratt. All those in favor? Opposed motion carries. Thank you, sir.
If I may.
Appreciate you coming out.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. If I may just now direct my question to staff, please?
Yes, certainly.
Uh, to staff, um, this isn't the first time that we've, uh, had a delegation over the years come to us as it relates to similar, um, concerns, uh, from blasting and, and other, uh, noise situations in their respective neighborhoods. Um, is there a hour of day noise bylaw that could be enforced now? Or is it something that needs to be, um, embraced and increased as it relates to this type of infraction, if you will, if it is in fact an infraction?
Your worship, I, I can confirm, um, what you heard from the delegation this evening is that we have an existing bylaw in place, uh, that does have hours in terms of construction noise where it's acceptable seven in the morning, as you heard. I think the suggestion that I heard this evening was that recognizing those hours, it may be appropriate to look at other hours to limit, uh, times, especially on weekends and, and statutory holidays, especially when that construction is in, uh, areas in close proximity to residential. So that's not something I believe that we've done in the past. We have, council has, I think, struggled in the past with issues around drilling and blasting in neighborhoods. But I don't think, uh, from memory, ever looked specifically at the issue of, of time of day of operation.
Just follow up, please. Um, so to try to get an answer, then, does our existing bylaw have timing restrictions on it that are, that may not be being observed? And they may be being observed. I'm not saying that they are or they aren't. But if there is a bylaw that says it's from seven till seven Monday to Friday, um, then is there a, uh, mechanism for the people in those areas that are feeling, uh, the concern? Is there a call that they can make? Is it seven, five, six, fifty-two hundred? What, what's their, what's their, um, remedy with the bylaw we have now?
Yeah, absolutely. Your, um, your worship, sorry. There's the bylaw right now, um, seven AM to nine PM, uh, Monday to Saturday. So if people find that there's construction noise outside of those hours, they can contact our bylaw department. I would say in general, uh, most contractors, developers in town are aware of the bylaw and operate within that timeframe. There are occasional times when we get complaints and the bylaw officers will attend the site and, and make sure that they're brought into compliance. But I would, I would say from my experience, those are relatively rare. But certainly if people find that there's a violation of that bylaw, they can contact us and, and we'll have a bylaw officer attend the property.
Councillor Hong?
Um, thank you, you two staff. Um, I, I get the concerns of, uh, the resident coming forward. I just wanted to be clear that this is for like new subdivision stuff. Because if I'm gonna get home after this at eight o'clock, I got a shed to put up. Does that mean I, I can't make any noise?
It means you need to work quickly until nine o'clock.
Yeah. So, but on the other rules, when my days off, on my statutory holidays and my weekends are my only times I can actually build something, I, I can't now because it's reduced. So I have a hard problem with this. The heavy equipment, the drilling, the heavy machines, the digging, you know, you get landscapers. I rent a Bobcat over a weekend to do my yard work. You know, sometimes I don't get to it. And i- if these are gonna limit me till five PM, when I don't get off work until five PM, I still want to do some work, how's that beneficial for the typical homeowner? So I think if we're gonna look at this, we need some clear clarifications on what we're talking about. I understand his problem with the two-year project. Yeah, that would drive me crazy. I get that. But if somebody next door is putting up a fence and he can only do it after he got off work, uh, well, I'm not gonna complain about that. So this is something that I would like to address as well when we do get to it.
Thank you. Councillor Kip?
Um, yeah, the construction noise can be horrible, the dust and stuff that goes with it. Um, it's something that we maybe need to look at if our bylaws are older now. Uh, personally, there's a sound issue that I would deal with in the town is that's cut off all emergency sirens after eleven o'clock at night. They're not that effective. The sound travels at night all over the place and lights are somewhat more effective. I even think places like Calgary and that are now are removing emergency sirens at night through neighborhoods. I mean, you figure the guy that lives up at the fire hall number one across the street and out goes the lights and sirens and, and all night. And they cruise down the main street screaming their sirens. And, um, that's a, that's a, a noise that we could almost eliminate. So, thanks.
Sorry, sir. Your delegation is over, sir. Thank you very much, councillor Kip. Motion to receive has been done. Great, thank you. Next item, Mr. Holden Southward regarding volunteering building skills for needed projects. Thank you, sir. Name and address for the record and you have up to ten minutes.
My name is Holden Southward. My address is eight four eight Aina's Place. Thank you for having me. Okay, well, the main thing I, I've had this idea actually twenty years ago, uh, about actually volunteering, maybe putting some people together. And I just wanted to present this to you before, you know, I started speaking to other people who have other skills about the idea of doing work. And I proposed this for us because, uh, it would be a way of dis, uh, offsetting the disproportionate rise in taxes compared to the, uh, the lagging private sector wages. It's starting to, you know, have effect, especially in cities like Vancouver. And you talk about volunteering. There's a lot of people that volunteer in, in Nanaimo. And there's a, there's a large amount of people who are like semi-retired and that. And they have that time. There's a lot of good people. And, uh, but if we're gonna end up, you know, going towards the direction of Vancouver or Victoria, people are gonna have to start, uh, you know, maybe working more hours and, or maybe staying with a job they hate rather than, you know, it's nice to have the grace when you get older. You don't have to necessarily just stop working, but you can do something more lighter or something. And a lot of people just get home, they're too tired. So this cuts down, you know, the more time, more double families have to work, you know, fam- I mean, families, both male, both husband and wife have to work, the less time they can really contribute. So all this has a, an issue. Also, um, I can just say that, you know, I built my house, uh, because I know what it costs to build. Like I, I started building my house in two thousand and four, finished in early two thousand and five. But in two thousand and six, the taxes were one thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars and some cents. And, but go ten years ahead, now it's, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, forty-something, forty-something dollars. So it's still not that big of an issue, but it's, it's still, it's, uh, compounded with all the other rising expenses like, you know, house insurance has gone up forty percent, uh, vehicle insurance. And the, some people will say, well, why don't you- vehicle insurance, and some people will say, well, why don't you take the trailer? Well, you know, I'm a carpenter, I can't carry my ladder on my back and on a bicycle, you know, you have to have a truck, and my wife has a car, and that's kind of our business. But then the other, all the other costs that you can't control, like hydro or even utilities, they keep on going up. But the real income of the average person has stayed stagnant. So this is, we're kind of coming to a crossroads where it's, you're looking in the future, and where is this gonna go? Is it gonna go up incrementally? Is it going, is it gonna go up proportionally? Or is it gonna go up exponentially? And what worries me too is Justin Trudeau or the Liberals, they just sold all the gold, you know, the rest of the gold reserves, and that usually doesn't have, that has an adverse effect on currency, which means inflation go up more. So let's say, in another ten years, instead of being twenty-five thousand, or two, twenty-five hundred dollars, if it went up almost double, it could be looking at, if it went up incrementally, it could be five thousand dollars. And that's a big chunk of change for the average family or to, to come up with. And I understand that we have a culture of, well, you know, this people who work for the government and that, they, you know, I know my brother and my sister-in-law, they work for the government, whatever, and, and, you know, whether it be municipality or the province, but there's a culture of retiring, you know, in your fifties, and, which is, I mean, it's novel, but it really, it's not really sustainable. And I mean, I suspect I could probably retire as long as, when I'm probably ninety, or eighty. I just, I don't think it's really gonna happen, so I'm gonna have to make sure I choose my jobs, you know, wisely, so, because I do, you know, construction work, and I keep on having to, okay, I'm fifty-one now, I still have to do these, do a big roof to pay for the city taxes, or there's other things like this, by myself. I can still do it, but, you know, it, I just wanna make sure, you know, it's nice to know that I can slow down, I don't care if I have to work when I'm eighty years old, or whatever, like as long as I can kind of just, you know, slow down without having all these mounting costs. So, and I think about the next generations we're opening up for, you know, we're creating...
Excuse me just a moment, sir. Counselor Beswick.
Thank you. Mr. Southward, with all due respect and without interfering or interrupting with your presentation, but the details of your presentation expressed that volunteering building skills for needed projects...
Exactly. I just got in there, sorry, sorry, Counselor, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go onto it now, sorry about that.
Are you intending to get to the volunteering building skills for needed projects?
So I just kind of gave you a little bit of the reason why, otherwise, so...
Okay, thank you, I appreciate, just so...
Yeah, yeah, so anyway, my, my...
You only have limited time, so...
Yeah, sorry, okay.
You've got five minutes left, sir.
Okay. Anyway, my vision was that getting a small group of people to come together with skills and starting off small, so where we'd be, you know, once that's coordinated, and once we'd have the okay with the city, it seemed like a cool idea, we can start on small humble projects, whether it be park work, fixing benches, maybe restoring some historic properties for the city, and maybe even doing some work for needed projects, even with the community, once that's organized. And this would be with people with a good reputation and references. And so you could even, even if somebody who lives on a disability of nine or something dollars a month, but needs to have a wheelchair ramp, you can have a couple of guys get together and build them a wheelchair ramp. You know, so it's kind of like, you know, it's research, it's, it's building up the idea of being service, in service to each other, without necessarily expecting anything back, because that's part of, you know, when you know when you're better yourself, you're better self and a human, is when you find more pleasure in serving rather than being served. So that's a, it's a grassroots, you know, start, but that's how, that's how it starts. Otherwise, you can't just do anything overnight. Very small, just a small little pet project. And then if it grows, if there's interest, then fine. If not, then, you know, that's just something that at least we tried. That's why I come here and I speak, you know, because I feel strongly about things, and I don't want to be older and say, oh, I wish I didn't, at least I tried, because I care about the next generations, the next seven generations. So we're on a kind of a, we know what's going on in the world, so I think it's really important that we think about this paradigm shift. It's not a threat to anybody, like contractors and that, or, you know, you're, you know, the government contractors, it's just something very small. Just for example, I built my house in two thousand and five, but it cost me a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I did a lot of my work myself, but I had to hire other people that were, had other skills, like plumbing and electrical and other things, to help me along the way. Unfinished basement, but it's still a nice house. And that kind of knowledge you can apply to, let's say, maybe building homes for even the homeless. Like I know somebody gave some land, free land to, you know, for a project for the homeless on Bowen Road, but I was really surprised to see that the cost for each apartment was four hundred thousand dollars. So obviously, there was some profits being made there, but it's kind, it's kind of like, you know, dealing with just a regular community guy, you can really cut the cost down. And I know it was the province that flipped the bill, but in the end, the province is going into debt. And that's another problem with the next generation, is that actually the debt is truly, whatever the province occurs, or the, or the federal government, it's still illegitimate because they don't owe that debt. It's a false debt. And that's part of responsibility that we have for the next generations. That's part of being in our service. You know, instead of going to the golf course, instead of doing many things, you can do something, and it's a relaxing thing, it's enjoyable, when you're just going, there's no pressure, you just, you just kind of take your time, everybody's nice and safe, and you help and build, and you build relationships, and you build your community. Nothing, especially if it's a recognized group. It's not like, you know, have some guy come along to some gal's house, say, hey, I can rebuild your stairs, you know, maybe I can get a date. This is kind of like, you know, you'd have, this would be a nice group of people that are just already, you know, in the project. But the main thing, first thing would be city, and then maybe it could go to helping the community too, but after it's proven itself. You know, so I can talk to people, I know quite a few people, but I would have to have some interest from the city for a little pet project like that, if they'd be interested. And I can, I can make it simple, give you ladies a little break from me for a little minute. But if you're interested, you know, I can, I can do that. I do this because I care about, I think about this, that's why I come here and sometimes say things that maybe can give me a bad reputation for some, if people don't agree with everything I say, but I take that risk because I feel strongly so, about the community, you know, so, and my family. So if you're interested, and I'll, I'll cut it off here, and you can just go, go on with your, what you think.
Thank you. Any questions for the delegation? I'm seeing none. I just wanted to say that I know that in Anamo, right now, there are thirty-four thousand registered volunteers in Anamo, and I'm just absolutely astounded every time I hear that number. One of the programs that's very successful is our Partners in Parks program, where the neighborhoods help to improve and almost steward local parks. But another program that perhaps Counselor Brennan can help me with, that I was involved with in Vancouver in the Lower Mainland, that was very, very successful, is the annual United Way Days of Caring, where corporations with their leadership teams involved in United Way would go out and do special projects that day. Very, very worthwhile. I would really, I would really suggest that you contact the United Way and inquire about the United Way Days of Caring, because it's an amazing program. I know they're always looking for people, for leaders, for programs like that.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I'll look into that.
Thank you very much. Go Counselor Kip.
Thank you, Holden, again. Your information I always appreciate, and don't think you should never come to the microphone. On the taxation, the Californians kind of did Proposition thirteen a long time ago, that when you bought into your house, that was your tax rate for life. But the guy next door to you, when he buys his house on Malibu Beach, he pays a higher, higher tax rate, the more current going. So it protected some of the elders or people that are in their homes, and maybe their income doesn't go up, and they can't afford that raise in taxes. So that was Proposition thirteen out of California, to protect people from losing their homes through taxation. The other one, Habitat for Humanity, is a phenomenal organization, and Anamo's built a number of houses over the years, and they do exactly that. They take skilled labors and volunteer and donate labor, and build things for people, and help them get into a home and things like that. And I think your, another point of it is, in some of the elders in our community and their houses are becoming disrepaired, it'd be wonderful to take a young hockey team and go over there, teaching them skills of cleaning, maintenance and that, and maybe fundraising through some of our major corporations to help those kids and fix that. So that'd be a great one, to help some of the elders in our community that can't maintain their house or do that. And I think it's got some real merit, so, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Motion to receive the delegation. Moved by Counselor Kip, seconded by Counselor Brennan. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Are there any motions arising or business arising from the delegations? I'm sorry?
There's one more.
Oh, my goodness. Kevin Story.
Mr. Southward came first, but it's Mr. Kevin Story.
Great, thank you. Mr. Story.
Kevin Story, still on Ross Town Road. Sometimes you really would like to forget me. Anyway, I'm here tonight to talk about the discussion that was going to take place again on the development permit, nine eighty-nine, thirty-seven, ninety-five, Glen Oaks Drive. What happened, about the confusion around it, and what the law states about talking about it again. Before I get started, I just want to be clear to council. I spent twenty-five years of my working life as a building contractor and a developer, so I'm well aware of the value of having good developers in the community, what they add to the economy, the jobs that they provide, and I'm definitely not anti-development. I also have extensive experience, as most of you know, municipal government, provincial government, and federal government. And when I come to speak to you now, because I'm getting on in my ears, is because I want to ensure that we have good government in Anamo. So there was a lot of confusion surrounding this, in the council chambers and outside of the council chambers. So just to review what happened, on the second of May, this development permit was presented to council. Council defeated the request that was made. On May the sixteenth, the mayor initiated a conversation to have this re-discussed. A motion was made by Mr. Counselor Thorpe to re-discuss. That motion was defeated. A motion was made by Counselor Brennan to try to put it over for two weeks and come back and discuss it tonight. That motion was defeated. The mayor then asked council if there was an appetite to have staff get a hold of the developer and talk things over. At that point, there didn't seem to be an appetite, and the meeting moved on. Now, on Friday, when I got the addenda, I see that the mayor had asked to bring this back for reconsideration tonight. My experience said he can't do that. So there was confusion. I talked to some of the aldermen, there was a lot of confusion in the community. So I went to work, looked up all the bylaws, looked up all the legal precedent, and got in conversation with the minister's office, and today received an opinion from them. And I'll just read it to you. This is from Michelle Dan. She's the Director of Advisory Services, Governance, and Structure Branch, Local Government Division, Ministry of Community, Sport, and Cultural Development. She sent me an email late this afternoon. The mayor may require a council to reconsider a matter and vote again with the following conditions. The reconsideration must be initiated at the same council meeting as the original vote took place, or within thirty days of that meeting, which is what happened on the sixteenth. Totally above board, and within the mayor's prerogative to do so. Under Section two B, a matter may not be reconsidered if there's already been a reconsideration. So procedurally, it could not come back tonight. So I just wanted to make that point clear, because there was a lot of confusion about that. And I've heard that, well, you know, it was another section of the Act that it was brought back under. Doesn't matter, it's the Act itself. As it was initiated by the mayor, he can only do that once. Now, I feel sorry for the contractor, you know, I, you know, he's probably wanting to get this house on the market. But, you know, as a council, you know, we really have to be careful not to create false expectations for people that we're dealing with. You know, it's important that we understand this type of legislation. There's been a lot of comments flying around out there in the social media about why this particular developer received this intention. We don't think I'll go into that tonight. I think I'll just leave it that I would like to make sure that council proceeds on a solid basis and a solid understanding of how the, how this type of thing happens. I did request that the minister's office clarify or make it a lot more clear in the community charter, so that this type of confusion doesn't happen in the past, and they said they would have a look at it, so I'll take any questions that you've got.
Counselor Kip, do you have a question for the delegation? Okay, thank you. Counselor Fuller, did you have a question for the delegation?
Not so much a question. Well, actually, I guess I could mention it, because I think he may be aware of this. Were you aware that the motion to defer, which was defeated, was never seconded in the first place? So there are really, they spent twenty minutes debating a motion to defer, we did, and there was actually no motion on the table, it was never seconded.
That motion, I can't remember whether it was, the original motion to discuss was made and seconded, and that motion actually was defeated unanimously after the mayor suggested that it be defeated, and then we'll talk about...
But, but I'm talking about the motion to defer only, I know the other motion was made and defeated as well.
No, no, it doesn't really matter, that motion to defer was a secondary motion.
Yeah, but it was never seconded, so it shouldn't have even, well, spending that much time on something. And we do this, we do this frequently, which irks me.
The key, the key to the whole conversation is that the original motion to reconsider was made, seconded, and defeated. Therefore, it was reconsidered one time and cannot be reconsidered a second time.
Yeah, I get that.
No matter how you interpret the Act, that is the interpretation. I'll leave a copy of the Act, sections and the letter.
To follow up on my question, I'd like to ask a question of Ms. Gury. You mentioned that it would be moved to June thirteenth, which is well after the thirty-day limits, and you mentioned a section that would allow that. Which section was that?
It's not a section that would allow that, it was a section that it couldn't be heard this evening.
Oh, okay.
And it was Section one fifty-four of the community charter, and it allows, it's the section that states that a reconsideration cannot be done at a committee of the whole meeting.
Delegation of council authority?
Yes, and so it says reconsiderations cannot be done.
So recognizing that, how can we do this on the thirteenth of June, if it's more than thirty days after, we should not be doing it, period.
I'll try and explain.
May I comment?
I want to hear the explanation, so hang on, Kevin.
Everything Mr. Story said is absolutely correct. There's only one issue that was my mistake on the last meeting, and that was that if the mayor wanted to bring forward the motion for reconsideration... the mayor wanted to bring forward the motion for reconsideration, we didn't actually have to vote on the reconsideration when it was brought forward by the mayor. So that's Section 131 of the charter. If a member of council brought it back, we would first have to vote to reconsider the motion before then reconsidering the motion. I know that sounds really convoluted, but basically, the mayor should have been able to bring it back, and we would have just, or you would have just voted on the DP vote again.
Yeah.
Not the motion to reconsider. And Councillor Thorpe made that motion to reconsider the motion, and that was defeated. The motion itself wasn't voted on again. So that's how the mayor initiated the reconsideration within the 30 days. So he initiated it on May 16th meeting, but the actual vote wasn't voted on again. The vote for the DP wasn't voted on again. The rest of Section 131 says the mayor has the authority to do this, so we don't have to vote whether he can or not. He can just bring it back. But the conditions have to be the same as they were the first time, so there can't be any new information.
Which would be the reason that the report attached to tonight's recommendation, which was turned down, was exactly the same as last time. Thank you.
That's the reason. So I hope that makes sense.
Makes sense.
If I could just make a comment on your question, Councillor Fuller. It was suggested that, by the mayor, that council suspend the policy regarding the normal procedures of considering development permits. I caution council against this. Anytime that you give one person, in this case, a developer, special privileges, you open the floodgates. Every developer in town will be here asking to have his development permits and building plans listened to time and time again. You know, the policies and procedures are there for a purpose. And I feel sorry for the developer. You know, this didn't work out for him. There was obviously a mistake in how that project was laid out, and now he's got a house that basically he can't sell. But I don't understand why one developer would be given all this special attention. That's all I have to say. And I caution council against that. The rules and policies of this municipal council are there for a purpose. Please don't try to bend them. Don't try to break them. That's a terrible form of government. Thank you.
Just if I may answer, we have already done that with development up on Third Street, but the reasons we did it were far different than this. And for me, being able to do that, we should be able to do it, but the circumstances have to be extenuating, and the Third Street one was. So, yeah, I totally agree with you. It could become expected.
My understanding is that the Third Avenue, Third Street project, there was a three-month time lapse, so it got cut from six months to three months. I mean, what was requested here was two weeks. Don't do it.
Exactly, exactly.
Thank you. Councillor Brennan?
Yeah, I just want to remark that the legislation says the mayor can require it to be redecided. And that was brought up that evening, but it was decided that that was the wrong reading of the legislation. And of course, it wasn't, was the correct reading of the legislation. And the timeframe that you're talking about, the two weeks as opposed to the three months or the six months, is written in the legislation. So if it was to, if the mayor was to bring it back and require the council reconsider it or make a decision again, it had to be done within the 30 days. So I think you're mixing up the amount of time that a developer has to reapply and the amount of time required by legislation for us to reconsider. Two different things. And finally, the only other comment I have is that developers and anyone else who encounters policy that they think is, shouldn't apply in their situation, are entitled to come and ask for council to review it. That's what a rezoning application is for. That's what a development variance permit is for. And so while you're right, we should generally ensure that we apply the rules as they're set out, there are always, there is always an opportunity for someone who isn't satisfied with that to come before council and ask council to reconsider. And if we were to apply a hard and fast rule that, no, that's policy, it cannot be changed, we would be in contravention of our own duties. And that's why we have rezoning applications and development variance permits that we look at, so that council can look at them, review them, and determine whether in fact our policy is correct, or whether in fact our staff was correct in interpreting it. That's why we have those things. So we would be remiss if we tried to have a hard and fast rule that it could never be done.
Well, Councillor Brennan, thank you for the lecture, but you're dead wrong.
Yeah, okay.
A person can come back and ask for a development permit which changes the original building permit, can ask for a variance which changes the original building permit. But a person cannot come back to council twice and ask to have that change reconsidered. Only once. So you're wrong.
No, but the mayor can require it.
So we don't need to debate this?
I'm not, I'm not going to debate it with you, but the mayor can require it.
Thank you, sir. Motion to receive the delegation. Moved by Councillor Brennan, seconded by Councillor Hall. All is in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much, sir. Councillor Kip?
Yeah, is there anything we need to do to assist Maureen Echol and Boom on Boomer's legacy to maybe we ask his council to get some, I think what they were looking for is a police car with lights on to support them on their drive through Nanamo. So I don't know if we need to make a requisition or a request through the staff that, to the RCMP, that they could look at assisting with this. So I don't know if we, do we, how do we prepare a motion for that, or make a motion to staff, contact the RCMP to see if they may assist with Boomer's legacy? And it's coming through fairly soon, but I wish we could help with that one.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor by, or you forgot that, Ms. Gury? Okay, so Councillor Kip, seconded by Councillor Brennan. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the question. All is in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Councillor Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. So just onto this again, Glen Oaks. You're bringing it back in two weeks with the report that was presented to us, according to Ms. Gury, that no new information can be provided. So are you, would you like to bring them back in two weeks with no information provided other than what the staff has presented? That's what Ms. Gury has said.
So I would need to clarify for Ms. Gury that that information would be information that would change the scope of the, of the application. Am I correct? If somebody, if somebody were to provide a different picture, would that be new information?
Yeah. I would say, yes, that would be new information that was provided in the report, which was what the vote was on initially.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kip, Councillor Beswick?
Thank you. I just wish to speak to the cemetery, Mr. Squire's presentation. And I'm not certain if a motion is required, but typically a motion gains more traction than not having a motion or some form of direction. And this may be a two-part motion, and if it gets a second, they're great. And if it doesn't, I understand, just trying to do this off the fly here, but the motion, the first portion of the motion would be direct staff to immediately retrieve all discarded headstones from the Nanamo Cemetery on or near city property, and subsequently stored in a safe place. And two, work with the appropriate persons, including staff, to identify and restore and determine the rightful place of these headstones. And I use headstones in a general term because there may be pieces that are not specific as a headstone. So two-part motion.
Got that, Ms. Gury?
I can share that with you if you wish, and/or I can read it again if necessary.
So you're moving the motion. Councillor Kip, seconded, I heard. Discussion. Do you wish to speak to it?
Well, I think before such time is the discarded, assuming that where, we know where they are, that we can go and retrieve these pieces of artifacts and of people's possessions and put them in a safe place. And then after we've accomplished that, determine their rightful place, if at all possible, with the necessary academics that would be able to work toward figuring that out. And I think it's the right thing to do. And hence, so that we can retrieve these discarded items and not perhaps have them vandalized, or perhaps somebody else go now and see there's something there that might be of a value, because we know that people are finding copper and all kinds of things all over the place and breaking into places for all of the wrong reasons. So now that this is certainly brought to our attention, I think we would be negligent, in my opinion only, if we didn't react swiftly. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Yocum, to the motion?
No, another item after this.
Councillor Thorpe, to the motion?
Yes, it is. Thank you, Chair. And I'll certainly support the motion fully, but I would also hope that along with that, we would get information back from our city staff in terms of the background to this whole situation, when it happened, why it happened, how it happened, and options on correcting it and making it right. Because with all due respect, and I appreciate Mr. Squire's information, and I do want to act on it, we are, we are right now just responding to the information he has presented. And I would like to hear, while I do support the motion, I'd also like to hear from staff on the background of how this happened, as I've said. So I hope that's part of it.
Ms. Samra? I like what Councillor Thorpe has suggested, a motion for staff to go away and investigate this. It can provide a report via email in between meetings. And I want to explore some of the legalities and a number of other issues that may be associated with this work. That would be helpful.
Thank you. Councillor Forrester, on the motion?
Yes, I'll definitely support this motion, but I want to assure Mr. Mima that this in no way reflects on the fact that you had offered to do this without us making a motion. I think this just strengthens what you were willing to do on your own, and will assure it get done. It's no reflection on you or staff not following through with what you said you would do.
Thank you. Councillor Beswick?
Thank you. I just wish to, to my colleague, Councillor Thorpe, if you wish to add, that is a third part, that we also direct staff to return with a report on the happenings or the hows and the whys and the whats, then I'm quite comfortable to have that as an amendment to the original, friendly amendment to the original motion.
That works for me.
Then we're not having to make two separate motions. It's a three-part motion.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, call the question. All is in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Next item, Councillor Yocum.
Thank you. Your worship, I'm not sure if this would be the place or how to go about this, or Ms. Samra. We've all received numerous emails and letters from the Zonta Club of Nanamo, and this and that, requesting about the UBCM resolution on human trafficking and exploitation of girls and youth and women, et cetera. And I believe, I haven't heard of any movement from this table, so I'd like some advice on how to go forward and where we can be of support for this very important cause that they're reaching out for. Thank you.
Thank you. What are you actually asking for?
How to go about supporting the Zonta Club and Ms. Peters' numerous emails we've all received over the last numerous months or years since I've been on council, and how we can support, and also all the letters of support from the Zonta Club they've sent to, I'm sure, all of us. So I don't want their requests, and it seems like a very fair request, and just the right thing to do to go on deaf ears. So I just want to make sure these people that are fighting an important cause are feeling heard. Thank you. And I don't know how to go about this at this table. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Beswick?
Thank you. If Councillor Yocum will indulge, perhaps this would be an opportunity for a notice of motion to work with staff on preparation of an appropriate motion as it relates to the topic that you are making the specific reference to, and bring that back in two weeks.
Sounds good.
Is that reasonable?
Certainly.
Yes, I was going to suggest that. So we'll work together on a notice of motion, and we'll bring it back.
Thank you very much. Now we go, any other items with respect to the delegation's business rising? Seeing none, we move into question, period. Gen. Items only, please.
My name is Fred Taylor of 204 Emory Way. In recalling, if memory serves me correctly, the adoption of the noise control bylaw, and standing on the little porch of the second floor after the adoption with Mr. Douglas, Councillor Douglas Rispin, I said, "There's a noisy car going along Terminal Avenue. Boombox, boombox," which I even get on Bow and Road. You're all putting aside the fact that you have a distance in that bylaw that one must prove the noise is coming from before you can do anything with the bylaw. Get rid of that distance demand, something like 450 feet. I got to prove that noise was coming 450 feet or greater or less, whatever it is, from the noise creator to do anything in asking for support of the bylaw. It's time we got rid of that distance demand in the bylaw, regardless of times of the day. Please.
Sir?
My last question is, in being raised beside the cemetery that Mr. Squire spoke about, I can recall several times coming before the council of the day of efforts to improve the cemetery, i.e. lawn, and for instance, even the fence all around, granite fence all the way around the cemetery is from the little curbs around each plot, et cetera. What we need before this council is information of the direction of the council of the day, how to improve that cemetery as you see it today. How did they go get okays to remove certain things that you've seen pictures of, et cetera, to turn it into lawn? And I think you'll find that was all done. It had to go to a level, flat plaque, so they can run the lawnmower over it. Also, when we bring up the subject of cemeteries, Mr. Swaby was sitting there a few years ago, promising the council a report on why we've only got one cemetery out of six dedicated as cemeteries. The oldest one at Wallace and Comox, about the third oldest in the province of B.C., has never been dedicated, dedicated as a cemetery. What is our problem? That we, the only one, you only got about two out of about six dedicated as cemeteries. You've got coal miners- You've got coal miners, people from the war, say, in the cemetery up at Comox, I mean, at Fitzwilliam and McClary. I even answered some calls to Ottawa Office as wanting to know certain cemetery plots and plaques are still there, and the one up next to the Catholic Church, which I went and investigated with the owners and found them, and they're all there, and informed Ottawa, yes, they're all there. When are we going to dedicate these properties as cemeteries? Where's the report from Mr. Swayze? He told you he'd bring back to you. I've spoken on this subject many a time, even before this council is there. Can't get anywhere about getting cemeteries proclaimed that they're cemeteries. Again, even about the third oldest one in B.C. is not dedicated as a cemetery at the corner of Wallace and Comox. You're trying to make a park out of it and put an extra right-hand turn lane down the full length of it, which was stopped. Because Victoria was fed all the information about the people buried there, and they put a stop to want to widen the road when you're widening it from Tim Hortons on the other side of Wallace Street. When are we going to get something done here? As far as when questions come before the council, they never seem to go anywhere.
Ms. Gury, can you please make a note to pass along to the city manager, the request with respect to the status of the report concerning the dedication of cemeteries?
Yes, I have that written down.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
I had a question.
Counselor Fuller?
Mr. Taylor, you mentioned that back in the day you were bringing stuff forward to council with regards to improving the lawn.
I didn't bring it before. The staff brought it to council for improving the cemetery.
Okay, I thought it was you. I thought it was you that brought it forward, and that you might actually be responsible.
No, I was.
Okay, cool. Thanks for clarifying.
No, I was just an youngster in the area, then.
Don't run away, Mr. Taylor. Counselor Beswick?
Not convinced that this is a question, but rather a compliment. And this is, once again, why it's so important that historians and people with the knowledge of our city remain connected to this body. And because you are providing a service, albeit one that you find frustrating from time to time.
I'm not going to leave, I can't.
This, it's, it is, it is so important that we have people come forward with memories that are a hell of a lot better than mine, and bring information to us so that we can act on it. And perseverance pays off. And let's hope this is another one of those cases. Thank you.
Sir, that cemetery went all the way to Pine Street. The city decided one day to sell all the lots fronting Pine Street and have a back alley to it. And then the cemetery starts, which there's a big chunk has never been developed as cemetery, which really would allow more burial plots. No word that you, we have heard of.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Reed? Please, please come to the podium, sir.
The reference to the statement that the gentleman just made here, it says, in the modern times, 120 meters, the noise is judged by. I think this was the only reason at the time to measure what kind of a noise we have. Today, we've got noise-sensitive equipment available, but we wouldn't need to buy it. We could get rid of the distance. And then if we have a bylaw officer, we could go out and measure, okay, this is too loud for what we think it is, so this cannot be tolerated. This would be one thing. The other thing is, Counselor Hall, was interested in making certain noises, let's say, after his work in his yard. The bylaw states specifically what kind of equipment it relates to, and this is really heavy construction equipment. For instance, the bylaw does not talk about the fact that maybe a drywaller wants to put up drywall on a Sunday, which doesn't make a heck of a lot of racket. Or he is trying to staple OSB board against two-by-fours. This, nobody will really worry about this. The other question was about fire sirens or firebells, this kind of stuff. I don't think we have too much of a problem with that because we know we need them. I might need this one day. You might need this one day. So I wouldn't go and say, don't let the cops, or the firemen, or the ambulance shut off their noise devices just because it happens to be 11 o'clock at night. I want to make sure that we all get to the hospital if we need it. So this would be the other thing. I think I've done.
People don't hear the sirens now. They don't hear the "hey, hey." That's why that big horn comes on, "bong, bong, bong."
Well, we hear them quite often, very often, on, what is it, usually?
I think the morning.
Wonder. Must have been a bad night. But it's not from the point of view, it is too loud for us. It is not. Or for instance, cutting your lawn. It is not an equipment that is really governed directly by the noise bylaw. There you say lawnmower and rutetiller, not after 9 o'clock at night. So it allows you to go that far. There are certain rules in there that are actually quite workable.
Thank you, sir.
I've done enough damage to you. Thank you very much.
I can move to your question. What's the statement?
Other question. I know the difference.
Any other questions?
There's questions here, that's all.
Okay. Before, before a motion to adjourn, I just wanted to let the public know that while there was not a scheduled meeting of council for June the 6th, there will now be a special open meeting of council for June the 6th. And I just wanted to let Counselor Yocum know that due to a commitment that I'd made back in March, based on the annual schedule, council meeting schedule, believing that we had the day free, I will not be here for that meeting on the 6th. So if staff could ensure that Counselor Yocum, as the acting mayor, gets the annotated notes, that would be great. Thank you very much. Motion to go in camera.
So.
Moved by Counselor Beswick, seconded by Counselor Fuller. All those in favor?
I've got something, I had press to speak, please. Everybody just naturally gets up and runs for that door. Just amazes me. I'm looking at the sections that are applying to this, and for the life of me, I cannot figure out how Section 92 applies to either of the two items on the agenda. I won't say what they are, but I am voting against going in camera on these two items.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. We are now moving camera.